Good evening and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, January 26, 2022, and we are beginning the meeting at 6:01 PM. So I call the meeting to order. At this time, I'm looking to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councilors tonight? Seeing and hearing none, I'll turn to administration.
I know your worship.
Okay. And then it's just the one that we have to discuss the, or we just have to have the exact section of FOIP to, to, to mention in the agenda. Jonathan, is that correct?
Yes, your worship, administration is requesting that an in-camera item is added to the agenda for strategic discussions. FOIP section 211A, and then we delete item 8.2, a letter regarding RCMP retroactive pay.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Counselors at home, were you all able to receive that latest script? And are comfortable with making a motion then? Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you. I will move the council adopt the January 26, sorry, 2020, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting with the following amendments, adding 11.1 Strategic Discussion, FOIP section 211A, and then removing 8.2, the letter regarding RCMP retroactive pay. And so I'll move that agenda as amended.
Thank you for that motion, Deputy Mayor, and I'll call the question, all in favor. And that motion is carried. We have no presentations tonight or delegations. So that brings us to 5, 5.1 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for December 8, 2021. Counselor Peterson on that one.
I wouldn't want to take Mark's, but I would move, your worship, the minutes of December 8, 2021 for Committee of the Whole.
Thank you very much for that motion. And you've all heard the motion, all in favor. And the motion is carried. We have no unfinished items in six, and in item seven, we have no tabled items or reports. So that brings us to eight items or reports from administration, 8.1 Council Procedure Bylaw, number 21-29. The review here in Committee of the Whole, and this, as council is aware, will come back. That's at a later meeting, possibly in the middle of February, but today's is going to be a discussion. It'll be following the presentation that I believe Jonathan will be, will be making to us tonight. Jonathan?
Thank you, your worship, and council, do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so today I'm going to review the proposed council procedure bylaw with you. This bylaw is a framework for council when it comes to how we conduct our meetings. However, I think it's important to keep in mind that there needs to be a lot of grace for each other during meetings. As Eli Mina said to us, there's no such thing as a perfect meeting. Our goal is to have a framework that we can use to have fuller conversations that better inform council's decisions. So during the presentation, I'll have a couple of questions for council, mostly about what do you want to see in this bylaw? As this bylaw governs council meetings for the foreseeable future. And then I might just do a regular check-in to see if you guys have any questions as well.
Jonathan, are you okay with questions throughout, or would you prefer them at the very end?
It's up to council. I'm fine with it throughout. Just have a little bit of patience with me. I have a hard time seeing everybody on the screen, so if you have a question, you might just have to yell at me or...
And just so council knows, I can only see two of you on the screen, so I won't be able to help you out too much as far as who's asking the question.
So with that being said, we are going to allow council to have those four more in-depth discussions about the sections within this bylaw. Any amendments that council would like to see will be brought to a future meeting or for, to, for council to formally approve. If there are substantial amendments, we may bring a new bylaw forward and let bylaw number 2129 die on first reading. If council would like to see any changes, please let us know today. Since this is a committee of the whole, this is our best opportunity to have lots of informal discussions and really make sure that this is the bylaw that you guys want to have for hopefully the next four years. So council procedure bylaw number 2129 was given first reading on November 3, 2021. However, during our orientation on parliamentary procedure, council indicated that they would like to bring this bylaw to a committee of the whole to review and have a fuller discussion. And another reason why we wanted to wait until today was we wanted our new CIO to be present for, for these discussions. I just want to note though, that this bylaw was reviewed by our municipal lawyers. It was actually the same lawyer who did our legal orientation. For that reason, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on items like pecuniary interest, rules and responsibilities, or public hearings, as this was covered during our legal orientation. But if you have any questions, we can definitely review those sections after the presentation. All right. As you're aware, our council is made up of a mayor and six counselors, and our deputy chief elected official or deputy mayor is appointed on a rotation. Each counselor was appointed to an eight-month term at our inaugural council meeting last October. I think the most important item to highlight in the application of this bylaw is the order of precedence. So municipal government act will always take precedence over this bylaw, and this bylaw will take precedence over Robert's Rules of Order. If there's an item that's not covered in this bylaw, then we would look to Robert's Rules of Order for some guidance. I also want to point out section 4.4 of this bylaw. This allows council to waive any part of this bylaw by suspension of the rules resolution. This is because this bylaw falls under the jurisdiction of council. But to be clear, we cannot waive the rules if in doing so, we would conflict with the MGA. So you're going to be a part of a variety of different meetings during your term. In October, we had our inaugural council meeting, which has to be held no later than two weeks after the municipal election. And every year, we have an organizational meeting, which is held no later than two weeks after the third Monday in October. These meetings set the stage for council's upcoming year. During our organizational council meeting, council will approve the meeting schedule, the schedule for deputy mayor. We'll appoint counselors and members of the public to our boards and committees. And then with the inaugural meeting, you'll also take the oath of office, review council code of conduct, procedure bylaw, and pertinent policies, and sign the council covenant. So over the last few months, we've been doing some educational sessions. The MGA has a list of topics that council must review during orientation within the 90 days after the swearing-in ceremony. These items are mandatory. However, throughout your term, there will be opportunities for education sessions. These sessions are not mandatory, and it's important that these sessions that the information travels one way and no council items are being moved forward. So in the next couple of slides, I'll go through different types of meetings and highlight some of the changes in the bylaw. Before I do, I just want to note that council meetings are properly constituted when proper notice is given, when minutes are recorded, and when we have quorum. And so we've added some more processes and procedures around quorum that are not in our current bylaw. This is all found in section nine of the proposed bylaw. So one of the things is if by the start of time of the meeting, we do not have quorum, we will wait 15 minutes before adjournment. The bylaw also includes sections on what happens if we lose quorum during the meeting or during a vote when a counselor is forced to abstain. And those are found in sections 9.2 and 9.3 respectively by law. So our bylaw states that our town will hold regular council meetings on the first, second, and third Wednesday of each month, the exception being August. We won't hold any meetings during the month of August unless they are a special council meeting. And our meetings will start at 6, and we'll have a hard stop at 10 PM. We do have a couple of questions regarding section eight of the proposed bylaw. So the first question I have for council is would council consider allowing the mayor to cancel, to cancel council meetings as long as he has two-thirds written approval for the rest of council? This would just tell us, in the case of an emergency, if we need to cancel a meeting for whatever reason, oh, we don't need to have a resolution of council, we wouldn't have to call a special meeting to cancel the meeting.
So Jonathan, would that be at least two-thirds of written approval? Again, I'm wondering if you have all seven responding. Four out of seven is typically a majority, but what would that be as far as canceling council meeting? Same thing.
Five out of seven. We could do, we could do a majority. That's, that's up to council. It's just a, just a thought that, just to let council discuss how you, how you want to address this item in your procedure bylaw when we do need to cancel a, a regular council meeting. For whatever reason, it could be, you know, we're in a pandemic, and that might force our hand and force us to cancel a meeting. So just how would you guys like to proceed with that question?
Okay, I have Counselor Peterson and then Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you, your worship. I, I am very much in favor of council allowing the mayor to cancel or council meetings with a two-thirds written approval. And the reason I, I believe this is that having that two-thirds majority prevents any kind of, of hijacking of any kind of an agenda. And if you weren't a judicious and perfect mayor that you are and have been, you know, things would still not be any different. I think that, that the, that the safety net that we have with the two-thirds written approval constitutes a reasonable request. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you. Yeah, I totally agree with Counselor Peterson. I see no issues with it. And anything we can do to kind of streamline things, as long as we're protecting the processes and keeping things fair, then yeah, I think we should be aiming to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jonathan up to this point? Seeing none, carry on, Jonathan. Thank you.
So the next question I have is related to section 8.1 of the bylaw. And the reason why we're asking for this amendment is that there may be times when beginning a meeting with a land acknowledgement may not be appropriate, such as when we call a special council meeting due to an emergency. So we're just wondering if council will be agreeable to adding that when deemed appropriate at the end of section 8.1 that you saw on your screen.
Counselor Peterson.
Your worship, I have a, a suggestion only, and I, I think that it would be most appropriate if we started every council meeting, or every first council meeting of every month with a set land acknowledgement that has been approved by, by, by our partnering council in Sicsica. And, and, and I truly believe the mayor should give it in Blackfoot, but doing it at the first, sorry, kidding. At the first of every month, I think would be, would just be a really good touch. And land acknowledgements can be very short and still. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think it's a good idea to not have it as like a, an automatic thing during, like when I was kind of reading about this. One of the things that I was reading was that we have to be careful about not making it performative or, or kind of almost just kind of meaningless. Like these things have to have meaning. And so by, by just making an automatic thing we do, it almost, I, I'm concerned it could start to lose meaning essentially or make it performative. So I think it should be, I, I like Counselor Peterson's suggestion, to be honest. But yeah, so I think that we should be careful about just kind of having it as an automatic thing at every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Langme.
Thank you, your worship. I, I echo what Counselor Peterson has suggested in that it, it, we do a land acknowledgement at the first regular council meeting of each month. I, I do want, that being said, I do hesitate, Jonathan, I know you suggested adding some wording as appropriate, and I think we've kind of moved away from that. But I, I do just want to kind of hesitate, I do hesitate to include language like as appropriate because it does lead to, it does leave some, some gray area for us to navigate through. For example, when we say as appropriate, well, who deems appropriate? How is that, how is that managed? Who makes that decision? So I just want to caution us as we move through this whole document that we, we try and be as specific as possible so, so that those, those type of situations don't arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langme. So Jonathan, before we just go on a little bit, are you looking for kind of an informal consensus as to where we are on these things? I see you nodding, so that's good. So I'm, I'm in agreement. I like the fact that we would start each month fresh, and we would have a, a land acknowledgement that would set the tone for the rest of the month's meetings. I'm thinking that would be good. Any other counselor comments? Let's, let me just see if there's anyone else wanting to speak.
It's just me, your worship. I just had one suggestion relative to, to what Counselor Montgomery, Montgomery's and Lang, and Counselor Langme said, and that is that one of, one of the ways to very simply and effectively eliminate that performative process where it becomes de rigueur and, and it loses meaning. One of the ways to stop that is to acknowledge, if we did it at the beginning of every month, in the Blackfoot language, the, the terminology for the months of the year in Blackfoot are, and even if you didn't say them out loud, even if they were just published in the agenda, but they have really profound meanings that very much relate to their whole learning from the lab and very much what, what former counselor Francis Wolfleg has, has taught a lot of us about. And so it would be, it would be one way of strongly acknowledging that context of, of Sicsica ways of knowing while making certain that, that it didn't become just a, a rote process, just, just an idea.
Thank you for that. So Jonathan, do you feel you have a good sense moving forward on that section?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I, so I understand for that first question, council, it's generally in favor of allowing the mayor to cancel the council, a council meeting as long as there's two-thirds written approval. And then there's consensus also around maybe the first meeting of the month having the traditional land acknowledgement as, as a part of our, our processes. And then we'll look into also including the, the terminology for the months in Blackfoot, including that maybe in our, in our agendas in some capacity. If that's council's consensus.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Metzner. And then we probably wouldn't be starting till March, the first one in March. The bylaws coming to us in February.
I think your worship, it really depends on how many amendments are going to be in this bylaw. I would say ideally, if everything goes well tonight, we can have this bylaw presented to council maybe February 16. But if there are some substantial amendments, it might take us a little bit more time to bring it to council.
Okay.
So it'd be March, March at the latest, I'd say.
Okay, thank you.
So special council meetings, they'll be called in accordance with the MGA. So they may be called by the mayor if, if they give at least 24 hours notice to the rest of council in writing. And council can't hold a special council meeting with less than 24 hours notice as long as two-thirds of council agrees in writing. But we've also included a process around canceling a special council meeting in section 8.7. This follows a very similar pattern in how special meetings are called. And so we do have a section also establishing a committee of the whole. The most important thing to keep in mind during a committee of the whole.
Just one sec, Jonathan. Deputy Mayor Montgomery, you have a question on the special council meetings?
Yeah, like I have a note about this, but it, it kind of is also covers a lot of things, and that is, should we define what two-thirds means? Sometimes two-thirds can mean two-thirds of the people that are at the meeting, and sometimes two-thirds can mean two-thirds of the people on council. So like five out of seven versus four out of seven. So I think it'd be smart to at least delineate when, when those instances are where it is two-thirds, meaning five versus two-thirds, meaning four. Or, or even, you know, if there's, you know, if there's less people at council, et cetera. But, you know, it's either four or five usually, and I think we should probably define when those instances need to be either or.
Jonathan, do you have a response?
Yeah, just through your worship, and I, I take your point, Counselor Montgomery. And the one thing I would say to that too is a lot of this is going to be mandated by the MGA. So the MGA will say that, you know, two-thirds majority for, or two-thirds of council in terms of special council meetings. So we have to follow that. Are you though referring to including in the bylaw that, you know, for this item, we need five votes? Or are you thinking more just refer to two-thirds of council present versus council as a whole?
Yeah, like honestly, like that would be, that would probably be a clear way to do it is just, you know, you could say two-thirds, but then in brackets, you could say five, and then, you know, like maybe in some other instance, we could say two-thirds bracket for, you know, just to make it clear what the actual requirement it is.
My, my one question on that though is, so the last council, we had a resignation from council, so that did change, you know, how many counselors we had on, on council. So that, that, that number may vary depending on the makeup of council at any given point. So that's the one reason why I maybe advise not to include hard numbers in the bylaw. But, but I mean, at the end of the day, this is council bylaw, so if you guys want to include those numbers, we can definitely look into doing that.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll noodle on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Langme.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just, I, I absolutely see where, where Deputy Mayor Montgomery is coming from on this, and I think it is something that needs to be a little bit more, just a little bit more obvious within the bylaw, which is, you know, two-thirds of total council versus two-thirds council present. I, I do agree with Jonathan, though, that we should hesitate to include hard numbers because it's also, you know, it could be two-thirds of council members present. You know, not all of us will attend every meeting. We, you know, there will be a day where someone's not available, and we only have a certain number of members. So I, I do think we need to leave some flexibility in the bylaw for there to be a change in, in number of counselors present for a meeting. I, I do like making it clear by saying two-thirds of counselors present or, or two-thirds of, of members as a whole, something like that. I, I do hesitate to put hard numbers into the bylaw, though, for that, for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langme. Counselor Peterson?
Your worship, if we were going to change the bylaw, I would be most in favor, or we're going to amend it, I would be most in favor of simply stating a two-thirds majority and in brackets of the members present. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, actually, I, I, I really like Counselor Langme's suggestion. Rather than, yeah, putting a number, you could just say two-thirds of counselors present or two-thirds of the whole council, you know, in some better way, of course. But I think that's probably a clean way to, to actually make it clear what the, the requirement is. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you still, Deputy Mayor, then, are you looking, would you like a, a definition in there then as, as far as different scenarios when based on the numbers of counselors who are at meetings?
You know, like I, I'm, I'm willing to, I guess, like maybe listen to or defer to administration's suggestion about what the best way to format it would be, just as long as, because like, you know, it kind of depends on the section, basically. It's, you know, it can vary from section to section. So whatever they think the, the cleanest way to, to define it section by section is, that's probably, they'll probably have a better idea than me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, do you have a good understanding?
Yes, your worship, thank you. Yeah, we can definitely bring more clarity to those sections, for sure.
Okay, thank you. We'll carry on then.
As I was saying, so we have a section establishing a committee of the whole. And so the most important thing to keep in mind during a committee of the whole is that it's just a forum for discussion and not a decision-making arena. The committee is going to be restricted per proposed bylaw to the types of motions it can make because it should be a place for informal discussion and on emerging issues and policy matters. So the process would be something like administration will bring an item forward for council to discuss and consider the broader policy implications. And then the committee may make a recommendation to council following. It's also a good place to obtain information. So in the bylaw, we have included section 15, which governs a question-and-answer period during the committee meetings. This allows council to ask questions to obtain information from the CIO. These questions do need to be limited to information that's readily available and not requiring, not require expending significant resources. Once a question is asked, the CIO may forward the question to the, to the relevant director, and it may take time for administration to come back to council with, with answers to those questions. It just depends on the nature of the question, I guess.
Good, Langme.
Thank you, worship. I, I like this section. I, I think it really, I think it helps clarify, you know, when we can ask questions during a meeting or what's an appropriate question and amount of information to be asked during a meeting versus something that, you know, might take some more effort. I guess my only question is, is that, why, why has this been limited to committee of the whole meetings? And is it possible to have this extended to council meetings? I know we've been looking for a way to kind of address, address kind of the, the, you know, the questions from council section, administrative inquiries, thank you, is, is the word I was looking for. So yeah, that's my question. Is it possible that we could put the, make this applicable to council meetings as well? Counselors, how do you feel about that? Thoughts?
Jonathan, do you want to weigh in first, and then we can take other thoughts?
Yeah, so let us move to this slide. One of the questions that we were going to ask council is, would council be open to making the second meeting of the month, the committee of the whole meeting? And so just to answer Counselor Langme's question on why this is restricted currently to committee of the whole, is that committee of the whole is that place for just that informal discussion. So we, we thought it'd be really appropriate to have it there as opposed to a regular council meeting where council's going to be asked to make some of those, I guess, some of those formal decisions and provide direction. So we thought it was appropriate to keep it a committee of the whole. And we were wondering if council would be open to making the second meeting of the month, a committee of the whole meeting. And on this slide, you'll see just comparison to some other municipalities, how often they meet, and whether or not they leverage committee of the whole as well.
And just for council's information, the last three terms that I've been on, the second Wednesday of the month is always a committee of the whole meeting. It was called a different thing in my first term. It was even more informal than committed to the whole. But we, we definitely made a change to having a regular committee of the whole meeting the second Wednesday of each month. But that's previous. Counselor Langme again?
Thank you. Sorry, I have so many questions. So we, if, if I remember correctly, we did decide at one of our first meetings to move away from having scheduled committee of the whole meetings and move, move towards having them kind of on an as-needed basis. Are we able today to make a, I suppose? Sorry, I'm just thinking procedurally. Are we able to make a decision today to kind of reverse that decision in, in the procedure bylaw? If that has already been enacted by resolution, can we do that at a committee of the whole meeting today? Is there any issues there? I'm not against the idea. I'm just wondering how it works with previous resolutions.
Jonathan?
Through your worship, what I would recommend is that, so at the inaugural meeting, we did approve the schedule for the upcoming year. What we could do is we could bring that schedule back to council on the second, and council could amend it at that point too. So we could bring an amended schedule for the, for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I, I have no issues at all with having a committee of the whole as the second meeting. Like that's, that's what I'm used to. And I think, I think in my experience, there is a lot of reasons to have a committee of the whole regularly just with the amount of information that we need to intake sometimes from administration. It makes sense to me that we would do that. And I share, I share a similar concern to Counselor Langme just about the frequency that we'd be able to publicly ask questions about the operation or administration of the town. And I think I, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm more leaning towards keeping the, the administrative inquiries. I found that there's a lot of use and a lot to be gained from being able to uh being able to publicly ask a question. And then to have that answer publicly answered, um you know, at a at a following meeting. And we even made the change last term of having the responses to uh administrative inquiries included in the agendas or included in the minutes, sorry. And and so that's that way people can look up, you know, like the answers to questions, you know, after the fact. Um and it just makes it easier to kind of disseminate information rather than counselors, you know, asking a question and then having to disseminate that themselves to, you know, people or or their network or something like that. Um that's why I think it's it's a good idea to be able to have uh a formal process where we can publicly ask a question. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Montgomery, Councilor Wiley?
Yes, so I have two questions. So back to the committee of the whole. Currently, we meet three regular council meetings a month. So would we still meet three regular council meetings a month plus the committee of the whole, or would it just be three in total?
Through your worship, the way that uh we're recommending it be done is the first meeting be a regular council meeting, the second meeting be a committee of the whole, and the third meeting be a regular council meeting. So we still only have three meetings scheduled for the month, two regular council and one committee of the whole.
Yeah, well, I trust the rest of the council to make that decision if that sounds good to them. My second question is about the administrative inquiry. I get what administration's saying, though, about the reason to get rid of them is if you were to get a wingnut counselor on and we'll call him Counselor Dent Wiley comes on and and uh he's kind of a nut job. And he asks things of admin all the time. You know, at some point, that is using up taxpayer money. That is a drain on our system. Um but I also would like to have some way, some format that we can go about publicly asking questions. So to me, that would even be if you know, Counselor Dent has this inquiry really wants to make. He can publicly put it in the in the meeting. It's in the minutes, but then the rest of council could vote it down. But at least then it's been asked. Like, I don't know if that's a a way of doing it, or you go with the question and answer period concept, but then Jason said in an email earlier, you could put some kind of a threshold on it, like uh Counselor Dan, this could probably cost thousands of dollars in in resources. So I I would like to have some way for a counselor to publicly ask a question. I don't need it to be the administrative inquiry. That's my thoughts.
Uh Jonathan, did you have a any response to that? We do have a section in our regular meetings where you have questions, either questions from counselors or comments between counselors. I don't know if that's uh a uh a defined enough section that uh it would do what Counselor Wiley's suggesting where you could publicly ask a question. Um I I must admit, I'm I I have become very comfortable with the administrative inquiries myself. I tried to be um uh really selective as as which ones I would ask. If it was a simple type of a question, I would try to do it a different way. But if it was a, you know, it's a serious question, you could I tried to to do that as far as the admin inquiries. Um so I'm not sure, Jonathan, if that would be enough of a a a defined section for counselors to ask a question publicly. Your take on that?
Yeah, I think your worship. I guess there are many, I guess, alternatives to counselor administrative inquiries. I know this council's you leveraged administrative inquiries in the past. If we want to return to that, that's that's fine. If it's a little council, we can definitely add that section back to this bylaw quite easily. Uh currently in our bylaw, we do have a section for notices of motion, which we've utilized in the last few months as well. Um I could think the most notable one was the city status that Counselor Mitsner brought forward. Um we also have this question and answer here during committee of the whole. And if we do bring that back on a regular basis, that'll be an opportunity as well. Um and we we are also going to lower the threshold to allow I I just be added to the agenda as well. So instead of a two thirds vote, it'd be a simple majority. Um so those are some alternatives as well, but if at the end of the day, this is council's bylaw. We want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with with the uh the tools that you guys have in your chest. So if if you guys want to add council inquiries back, you can you can definitely make that amendment. If council would like.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wiley, do you have a a follow-up question?
Sure, thank you. Um so yeah, if we want to go down the road of not having administrative inquiries, I would just like to have it in the definitions at the the beginning. So for example, if we decide to go question and answer, I'd like it to be in there and clearly defined like Mayor Fuel was saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. I'll go now to Counselor Peterson and then Counselor Langway- Langmade.
Thank you, worship. I don't have hardly anything left to say because Counselor Wiley identified very clearly what what my concern is, and that is that how how do you get the free flow of question and answer within a democratic system um that that allows also what Counselor Langmade spoke to, that free-flowing idea of of accountability, questioning and and answers from both council and the professional administration that that surround us. I think from it from my part, administrative inquiries did not lend themselves to that. Sometimes, uh I I was very judicious over the period of the last uh council and uh put very, very few forward. But I I also know that during that time, there were administrative inquiries that were months coming forward, and it wasn't efficient. And so I liked what I heard from Jonathan when we were discussing this initially in the training and and subsequent conversations. When he said, there's all kinds of opportunities to allow for the free flow of questions between council and administration, between council and council, and council and the public. And however that could happen, those are the kinds of things that I would like to see discussed. We are accountable to the people who put us behind that table and we're also accountable um to each other and and to and to the people that that uh that do all the good work for our community. So I would really be interested in hearing more from Jonathan from what he what he spoke to before. And uh I do agree that administrative inquiries are not the most effective way to do that.
Thank you. Uh Jonathan, did you want? Oh, Kevin, I um C A O Scoble, I see you. Uh it'd be good to hear you weigh in on something, too. So let's go to uh C A O Scoble.
Uh thank you, worship. Uh yeah, the good good questions, good comments. Um you know, perhaps maybe the way to frame this is there's almost a bit of an initial filter, right? Like the the whatever mechanism it is, the question is asked, right? And and if it's a question that can be answered on the spot, it's answered. If if it, uh you know, we have to take a week and go away and come back for the next meeting, we can do that. If it's a bigger one, which is, you know, the the administrative inquiries is bit of a new genre for me, but not that different from some from some other methods I've seen. So what I'm saying is you almost have this clearinghouse where it comes in, we can answer it on the spot. Uh it's going to take us a week to just go away and and check our data or ask questions of of staff that aren't at the meeting. Or if it's a big, you know, if it's going to be something that's going to take, you know, say a month for administration to go away and research and come back, or, you know, we're going to have to seek some external expertise that requires um you know, some expenditure of funds, which council would have to approve to do that. So maybe that's the way to frame it. There's that initial mechanism, whatever it is, and then it goes into one of those bins. We can answer it on spot. We'll commit to answer that next next council meeting. Or uh you know what? It's going to take some time or some money. And that may take us a week or two to to determine. Then we would come back and say, council, it's um, you know, it's going to take some time or money or what have you. Would you like us to proceed with that? And then at that point, council can can uh put that vote in place if that's something that we want to pursue further or not. Uh just my thoughts anyways, because I think there's got to be the free flow that everybody's talking about, but I think you almost kind of have to categorize the the nature of the question once it comes in.
I I agree with you, C A O Scoble. I'm just wondering, you know, the administrative inquiries might be that title that um you 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 bring those up and and like you say, if if administration has a quick response, we get it under that. And then if it is going to be weightier, then we you you give us that information, hey, this is going to take a while. Or hey, this is going to involve us turning to some experts. There's going to be a cost to that. But it could, to me, it it seems to lend itself to have it fall under the the overarching title of administrative inquiries, and then you and your team tell us, okay, this is an easy answer. We'll give it to you right away.
Yeah, uh and we can do that. I I think that could work. And and you know, it's some of the questions that come in, you know, right off the bat top, we could probably say, you know what, that's going to take us some time and money. Like, we could almost tell you on the spot for some of them that that's that's going to be. And maybe that's what you call, you know, maybe it's counts questions of administration is the broader title. And then then we say it's an administrative inquiry and then in future it's classified into that and comes back to council under that that part of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh I'll go now to Counselor Langmade and then Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you, worship. Um I I know that there were there are many ways that we could address this, and I'm and I'm sure through tonight's discussion, we'll be able to find something uh find a solution that works uh for for most, if not all of us. Uh I think what's really this section fifteen point two uh where it defines, you know, an encryander, this section must. Um however, however, we end up structuring uh the ability to ask questions. I I think this list of, you know, A, B, and C is re- is really uh important for us to keep in the bylaw. No matter how it ends up looking, uh that just provides some really good guidance to us as counselors to know when when something might be appropriate for a quick administrative inquiry. Or if the question we're asking, you know, is because we we sometimes will know, too, if the questions that we're asking um are are a bit of a bit bigger in scope than just a simple answer. Uh so it gives us some some guidelines as well. Uh so I do really like that section fifteen point two. And and the other thing that I, the other comment I just want to make is I I would like to see this uh whatever this for question a- asking format turns out to be. I would like it to see it apply uh my point of view to both committee of the whole and regular council meetings. I I I don't want to be limited to uh, you know, once once a month being able to ask uh questions, because questions do come up, situations change, things things happen. And I I think that it's important that we have have a, you know, a method available to us to ask questions uh at at any meeting that that we're attending. Uh just just because sometimes, you know, I I would be kicking myself if a if an issue was raised tomorrow that I had to wait a month for to be able to ask a question about. Thank you. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Uh Deputy Mayor Montgomery?
Thank you. Um so I think there's some really good points being made here and um like I I personally, I like the idea of us being able to submit questions. And you know, like a lot of us, you know, like it's, you know, it's common for us to submit questions to, you know, through email for once, for instance, you know. And so obviously, we don't have to kind of, you know, wait to submit those and and you know, if administration could provide the answer back, you know, quickly and easily, then, you know, they do so. Um you know, and I like the idea of, I I I I like to try to submit questions ahead of time, you know, rather than waiting for the meeting, you know, I I send in my questions, you know. And I don't have a problem saying, you know, hey, this is something that I would I'm going to be asking, you know, at this, you know, subsequent meeting or something like that. And and I I would really appreciate it if uh there was, you know, a mechanism where the C A O could just say, hey, you know, this is going to take, you know, some resources to, you know, kind of answer. Let's bring this to the meeting and council can, you know, either, you know, kind of move ahead with it or not. Um and then the other thing I would like as well is just if we could have it so that any responses that are given to to those questions that are asked in public, if we could have those recorded in the minutes just for the public's uh information, that'd be great. Thank you.
Jonathan, are you um able to get a consensus or an idea of what the consensus is there? Um based on C A O Scoble's input and and I like the idea that it 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 is called something and then we are told when we submit these, whether they're I mean, we'll either be given a quick answer or we'll be told that it and it it's going to take some time, but it's still asked publicly. And then we're also then told, okay, this is going to take a while, and there may be a cost involved. And I think that would I think that ties back to what Counselor Wiley was saying as far as being able to ask questions and and get and get uh you know, a stream of questions and answers back and forth. Uh Counselor Wiley, and then I'll go to Jonathan.
Yeah, and I just want to repeat what Melissa said. So I think uh to keep fifteen point one, or sorry, fifteen point two in there in whatever format we come up with. But then include fifteen point three, that if they don't meet the criteria, it instantly goes to some kind of a resolution. And then we can, we can decide. Or you can advise us, it might take a week to make that resolution or something like that.
Okay. Thank you, Council Wiley. Jonathan?
Uh yeah, thank you, your worship. Um so yeah, I I heard two conversations there. One on how we will conduct these types of questions during a public meeting. Um so we like the Q and A as written in section fifteen of our bylaw for committee of the whole. We also want to have that maybe in our regular council meeting as well, or some variation of that. And then the second thing I heard is that so council always has the ability to ask the office and C A O for information. And and the C A O may advise on whether or not that may need to go to council and may need a, you know, a motion to direct administration to look deeper into matter. But we want to maybe have a more formal process on how those questions are coming in and how they're being answered. Is that correct?
I think that's a good summation.
Yeah, I think uh we will definitely look into having a more formal process on uh those those questions that are emailed to the office of the C A O. Um I know there's different ways of doing that, so we'll uh we'll try and put our heads together and come up with a good process that fits. It's our council administration.
Thank you. C A O Scoble?
Yeah, just just summarizing and and perhaps some clarification. I I think the way it could work then is is that there's a a question and answer section at all meetings, whether it's a council meeting or a committee of the whole. The question comes in, that's the starting point for it. And it's either answered on the spot, or we say, you know what, we're going to have to come back next week or the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, that question would be still under the questions of of administration or whatever we call it. And then uh when I report out on that the next week, we would either answer it on the spot or say, you know what, we've looked at this. It looks like it's going to be an administrative inquiry. And then it would flow into the administrative inquiry section on the agenda. And whatever the criteria are that we propose and and council ultimately decides to accept or not, or whatever council decides, then the council would say, whatever those triggers are, then council would make the decision whether we're going to look at it further. I think, you know, and then I think you would just keep flowing it. It never gets lost, but it starts out in one category. And it's either dealt with in that category, questions and answers, or ultimately it's referred to administrative inquiries and then whatever the process decided upon for council, it it follows that from then on.
Okay, thank you.
And if it's an administrative inquiry, then maybe we can vote to keep it as a resolution.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you. So we'll carry on, Jonathan?
Um so we've spent a lot of time reviewing rules around closed meetings, so I'll keep this part really brief. And just say that uh we can only go into a closed meeting to discuss an item if that item being discussed falls within one of the exceptions to disclosure in FOIP. Um and uh the next slide, we'll discuss a little bit more and and how we'll conduct uh in-camera meetings during uh virtual meetings. Uh so section ten and eleven of the bylaw are really a result of both advances in technology, but also response due to COVID. At the onset of the pandemic, many municipalities had to develop procedures around meetings, meaning virtually and live streaming. These sections are not really new to this council. We've essentially been following much of these processes for as long as I've been here. Um but just to highlight, when we meet virtually, video must remain on unless council passes a motion allowing a council to turn off their video. And council will be deemed present for as long as the connection is active. Uh the vote for the council attending virtually will be taken after the council members present have cast their votes. And during a closed meeting, the counselor must confirm that they are alone. Uh so in our bylaw, we actually state that they would have to um make a declaration in front of our commissioner votes.
And that's just for the in-camera closed portion of a meeting, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um Counselor Weggener?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just to to that um that point with the with the cameras. Um I know that some of the some of the counselors and 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 that myself at times have had connectivity issues where the where the light, where we kind of freeze up and and shutting our camera off seems to help. I see the, I see the need why we should have it on, especially for in-camera stuff. But if if it if the um connectivity is affected, do we need a motion to turn our camera off for something like that?
Um I'm not sure that, Jonathan. If if there was a situation where a person's home computer worked better by having the video shut off, is that something that if this was in? If this was in, then we would have to look at giving that permission to shut. That person permission to shut off their, their screen or their video stream?
Uh, yes, your worship. Uh, according to this bylaw, we would still require that motion to say that, yeah, you can turn your video off. And there's a couple of reasons for this, is that uh, when you attend the meeting in person. We're actually, when we're recording the minutes, we're watching to see if you leave the room at any point, and if you do, we have to record that in the minutes. And so if you were to turn off your video, we kind of lose that ability to kind of keep track of who's in the meeting at what point. And so we are requesting that you do keep your camera on. Of course, there's going to be connectivity issues and those instances. Um, we just want to make sure that's clear, that, that's okay with all the rest of council as well. If that makes any sense, that we just want to make sure that's, that's been vocalized, that, hey, I'm having some issues with my connection, I need to turn my video off. We also are looking into um potential solutions to that issue. Uh, one of the things that's a possibility is if you are having connectivity issues, you can hotspot off of your uh cellphone. So that the phone that I think all council's been given when they first started uh back in October. Um, so that's, that's a potential solution to that, that issue.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, does that help you councillor Weggener? We'd have to, I guess, decide what we're going to do as far as the process moving forward then.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. It was more just uh. Just, just a question to be thrown out there because I have seen it happen before with the connectivity issues.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you. Uh, have councillor Langmead and then councillor Wiley and then deputy mayor Montgomery.
Thank you, your worship. I have, I ha- I have a couple of questions for this, for this section ten and eleven. Um, section ten point five about uh stating when a vote is called, council members attending the meeting in person. Uh, or, or pardon me, uh electronically are asked to state their vote only after all other council members present at the meeting have cast their votes. I, this isn't a hill I'm willing to die on. Uh, I'm, I'm not generally a fan of that. Um, it's, it, it, because what, in the end, what it does is it gives that, that one councillor. Um, a preview of how the vote is going to go. And allows them to make a, a, you know, allows them a, a little bit more time to make a, make a decision based on how. Other councillors have decided. Um, you know, and, and I. And this wasn't an issue, but just calling it out, the, you know, the other, the last meeting we had where we were discussing the roundabout. Uh, councillor Wiley was the last one to kind of make the decision and he saw that he, you know, he saw that he was going to be the vote split. Now, I'm certainly not insinuating that that impacted his decision at all in that situation and councillor Wiley, I'm sorry that I. Used you as an example here, uh, but it, it was just an example of the situation and, and in a different circumstance that, that might have an. Uh, an impact uh kind of on how things, how things go uh and how, how votes are done. I don't have a suggestion on how to fix that, uh, which is not helpful, I understand, but it's just a, a comment I have on that, that I'm not a huge fan. Um.
And it does, sorry, councillor Langmead, if I could just piggyback on what you said. It puts a lot of pressure on that person too. If, if they, they're determined to be that last vote. And this could come up at a few different times in a meeting, it puts an awful lot of pressure on that person if they've got to hold their. Stating their vote uh because they're off screen, so I.
Yeah, I'll just interject there too, Melissa, I completely agree. And for the exact same example you just gave. Uh. You, you don't want to be the last person voting and it wasn't something uh that was by my design, it was just slow brain thinking. But um, no, I, I think it gives the, the councillor at home either unfair pressure or unfair advantage to see how everyone else is going to vote, so there's got to be.
And, and on a contentious item, I think that that could be uh used as a strategy. Um, you know, if, if there's an item that's coming before council that we know is going to be. Or, or is very contentious around town, you know, that. It could be used as a strategy, okay, I'm going to stay home and vote from home so that I can see. How the rest of council is going to handle this and, and try and kind of pick my side. Um. So ju- ju- just some thoughts there. Uh, I understand uh the me, the, the reason for ten point six for have it for. You know, needing, needing to ensure some way, you know, ensure that a councillor in a closed session is alone. Um, and I can s- I can see the purpose of this section. I guess what I'm curious about is, you know, how. How would it look in practice? Is this? You know, uh, making oaths in front of the commissioner of oaths, um. You know, is that something that we as a council would then, would then see and confirm, you know? It's, I can see the purpose of it. But I'm not sure on the follow-up end of this, if it's. Really con- really confirming much or more just a, uh, and pardon my language here, but kind of a cover your butt. Uh, scenario where we're just, just getting a piece of paper signed saying it, uh, you know. Is that really, is that really the most effective way of ensuring it? Uh, again, I'm sorry that I don't have a solution for this one, I only had a comment. And then my other overall, and I'll, I'll stop talking after this one. My other overall comment that I have, and this was brought up to me by, by a resident. Is that when we are having virtual meetings, we don't currently have a method available for a member of the public. To speak to us on a issue that they're concerned about, unless they've submitted a delegation request. And as far as I know, there is no way for them to have time to submit a delegation request in time for a council meeting. To be able to speak to council on an item that's important to them because the agenda isn't published until the Friday before. Now, I'm not suggesting that we need an agenda earlier, but I do think we need to.
I think we've, we've lost you.
These are, these are publics and become involved if they, are, am I here now?
Uh, now you are. We missed a little bit of that last sentence.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what I was just saying is I, I think it is really important that we have a way. Uh, that the public could become involved in our meetings or, or. Ask to speak to council over an item that they're concerned about. Um, and we don't currently have a procedure for that. And I, and I didn't see it's, uh, didn't see a solution to that in this bylaw. Jonathan, do you have any ideas around that, how we could ensure that the public is available to participate in our meetings? Uh, you know, i- in a similar method as, as they would be were we, were we in person?
Um, yes, through, through your worship, uh, actually in bylaw, in the bylaw, section twenty-six. One of the things we're proposing, including in our agendas, is a public comment session. Let me just kind of bring that up here. Um, so what the public comment section would do is it allow members of the public to come to our, our meetings and they would have. Up to five minutes to speak to any item that's on the agenda. Uh, once they're approved to do so by the mayor. Well, that's something that we currently don't have on our agendas, but it would be something that we were recommending that be added to our agendas, once this bylaws approved or. Whenever this bylaw eventually looks like it's approved.
And, and how would that work in a virtual format then? Because they're not kind of in the room, they would have to, they would have to send an email on the, you know, the Monday, the Tuesday or the Wednesday prior to the meeting. Uh, to get the Zoom information to be able to attend and is that?
So, there would be, um, there's different ways of doing it, so. Administration has already developed some forms regarding this section. And so if this is approved by council, council would like to see this on our agendas going forward. We would have forums and, and members of the public would be granted the opportunity to either email their questions. Or we can kind of facilitate some way of them to actually maybe present to council via Zoom or, or what have you. We would have to iron out some of those details, but we'd make sure that we um definitely get them to submit a form with those questions in advance for council review.
And, and would that be, uh, sorry that I have so many questions, would that be a separate section of the meeting?
Though, though, we would actually add a heading onto the agenda.
Okay, because the, the question I kind of have on top of that then, so. Would that heading on the agenda come before all of our agenda items then? Would that be one of the first things on our agenda? I want to avoid a situation where we have something on the agenda, we discuss it. And we make the resolution before we have a public, you know, before we move on to public comment. Which might, which may, you know, may be relevant.
Yeah, it would be early in the agenda.
Your worship, Devon here, maybe, maybe I can help out a little bit with this. We should, uh, you know, uh, you know, going back to the, to the, the roundabout, for example, um, you know, we should. Um, while we're in the pandemic situation, the public should be able to participate and speak to an agenda on the item virtually, right? So, um, what we're looking at, uh, I've seen it done elsewhere, I, I, you know, where I came from. Is residents should be able to register up till a couple hours before the meeting to speak to an item on the agenda. Uh, through ledge. Unfortunately, they can't just show up for the council meeting because it's virtual, right? But virtually, if they register through ledge services up to a couple hours before the meeting. Then they can speak to an item on the agenda, we'll send them the Zoom link and they come in and out of the meeting so that they can actively um. Um, present their, their statements they'd like to make to council. That, that's something we can enable, we should be doing that because um. The public needs to be able to speak to an item on the agenda. So that's a little bit different than the delegations, which we can do virtually or in person. We just have to register a certain time in advance, but if it's an item on the agenda. Um, we should be able to take um their registration up to a couple hours before the meeting. Now, it's, you know, up to council what you want to do, delegation, uh, presentations or, or residents speaking to an item on the agenda. Can be a section at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, and/or they can speak at the time of, that's how I've seen it done, is the, the choice is given to the member of the public if they wish to speak at the beginning of the meeting. Rather than waiting around for a couple hours till it comes up, or they can speak at the time it's on the agenda, it's, it's their choice. That's how I've seen it done, but ultimately it, it's council's choice what you would like to do.
I like the idea of the start because it, it is convenient for the person at home. It might be difficult for them to stick around for a long meeting, but it is still important, but they have other family um commitments, for example. Um, Kara, did you want to add anything to what C A O Scoble said and then I'll go back to our regular order of speaking?
No, I think actually I wanted to echo exactly what C A O Scoble said um in regards to the process. So I think John kind of touched on it in the sense that we've already kind of developed some, some forms so that people can go ahead and, and register and exactly like C A O Scoble said. Um, having that ability kind of, you know, up to, uh, closer to the meeting for the public comment section. Obviously, a little bit further out in regards to delegations, because that does require some preparation in order to get onto the, onto the agenda. But yes, those processes, if council does proceed with the public comments piece. And regardless, um, in regards, regards to delegations, we would proceed with, with having them virtual, so absolutely, this is something that, um, that is being a- already addressed.
Okay, thank you. And Jonathan, that section on, on public question, I, I can see part of the next screen, I think it is, is that, is that going to be covered in that section then? I can see a small screen about agendas and.
Oh, can you, uh, um. No, it would be, it's later on, we might discuss it a little bit more fully, but uh, I, if. Is this something council would like to see going forward, is the public comment section on the agenda?
I think that, I think council agrees that that's a, a good way to go for the public to have uh input into our meetings and to be able to get. Some of their questions and concerns dealt with.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then we'll go back to councillor Wiley, you were the next on my speaking list.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Fuel. Um, so just to go back to the public section and so we'll add something in the bylaw that's, that refers to electronics, if it's over Zoom or what have you. Like specifically saying what uh C A O Scoble said.
I'm, s- sorry, is, are you're just referring to the procedures of how that would occur if somebody wanted to register to speak through the public comment section?
Exactly. Will that procedure be referred to in, say, section twenty-six?
We, we definitely can spell it out a little bit more fully, but that would likely just be, um, we, we develop a procedure around that. Internally.
Sections ten and eleven, electronic communications and meetings, so I'd like to go back to section ten point one. I found the wording in this uh a little bit funny. It says acceptable modes of electronic communication include through the use of telephone. As the first thing, but then it gets into how we should have our screens on and all that different stuff, so I think that. That's a little awkward in there. I think we should prioritize a device with audio and video. And then if we have to make a motion to allow councillor to use a phone or whatever the problem might be. But I think it need, the priority needs to be fixed there.
Councillor Wiley, if I could just clarify then, are you looking that um having a video. Would, would be a higher priority as far as a mode of communication and using a telephone with no screen would be much lower on the list than that kind of.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I, I understand. Jonathan, are you with us on that?
Uh, through your worship, yeah, for sure, we can, we can prioritize that in the, and spell it out a little bit here more clearly in the bylaw.
And I think your reasons listed for having an odd, or having video on makes sense. I mean, in addition to the fact we're accountable to the public, so I think they would like to see what we're doing during the meeting, just like they can if we're live. And uh, also we're accountable to each other, so it's very difficult. That conversation, I know this is a conversation and it just feels like you're yelling into an empty hallway, so. Um, I, I would definitely prefer ju- just like it says in here, that the video and audio. Okay, so that was my first commenter question.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I also echo what Melissa, councillor Melissa Langmead was saying here about um section. Here it is, ten point six. Um, it does seem rather onerous to request that somebody has to swear an affidavit before commissioner of oaths. Um. I just wondered if a verbal promise at the time where each one of us has to make a verbal declaration, you know, on screen that we're alone. Would be enough, but I, I don't know the legal side of that.
Your worship, could Jonathan speak to the legal considerations and ramifications of swearing an affidavit? That's one of my questions as well.
Okay, that would tie up and tie into councillor Wiley's then.
Um, so yeah, item ten point six, uh, through your worship, sorry, excuse me, um. We all were doing, all this section is really supposed to do is just make sure that we're, the people that are in the in camera session are supposed to be in the camera session. So we just want to make sure that's clear, um, make sure that, you know, that's stated. At the start of the in camera session and then afterwards, I, that promise is verified by making a, by meeting with our commissioner of oaths and making that oath at that point. It doesn't need to be in the bylaw as written, we can definitely amend that section just to say that, you know, you have to have promised at the start of the in camera or affirm at the. Start of the in camera session that you are alone in the room. Um, that's up to council, that'd be up to council's discretion, so definitely open to amending that section as council sees fit. Um, just as long as there's some kind of way to kind of affirm that uh those in the in camera session are supposed to be in the in camera session.
Is it back to me?
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to look at uh section ten point seven. And there was a couple of places in here where it said that notice should be posted on the town's administrative office. There's a couple of times it said that. I wondered if we could update that to the twenty-first century and include our website. And perhaps like some social media outlets as well as just sticking it on a bulletin?
Jonathan, you're good with that?
Uh, through your worship, yeah, of course. Um, we do need to develop a, a bylaw regarding public notices. Um. One of the things though too, I, I do think that there's still some merit in posting on our town building, just because I, I remember during the elections, I was making a lot of phone calls from members of the public who um don't always. Look at our webpage or, or look at our website very often, so might just be something that we. We do all the above as opposed to just one or the other, but for sure, we can, we can clarify that in the bylaw.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then my last comment, I really just want to open up the floor to discussion on this. So, um. At the, at the last meeting we had, and the, and the heavy debate on the roundabout versus the traffic lights. I also had someone email me right while I was, right while we were talking. And it made me realize that like, there's nothing in this bylaw to, to discuss council or how comfortable we are with our fellow councillors. Being on our computer.
Oh, I think you froze, councillor Wiley.
Receiving texts and receiving emails and receiving influence. Am I back?
Uh, you, you were, and now you're back.
Am I back now?
Yes, could, maybe you could repeat your last couple of sentences about electronic devices.
So just, I'm wondering how comfortable the rest of council is on the fact that we can be receiving texts and emails and all kinds of electronic communication while we're making some of these important decisions. I think in the old days, if you picture, you know, people coming out to the building and they're sitting there, we're not letting them just talk throughout the entire time. So how do we feel? And do we want this to reflect in the bylaw about us receiving communications of that sort during the council meetings?
That's an interesting question. Council, do you want to, uh, just discuss that a bit? I know some of you are waiting in line, councillor Peterson, uh, and I have deputy mayor Montgomery. Um, if this is going to be a, a little harder to do, I've got you written down for earlier questions, but councillor Wiley has got a good discussion point section here.
Yeah, please go ahead.
I think, I think that's a really, really interesting insight. I, I, I would not, a- any more than I would be in the normal course of the situation influenced by my fellow councillors' arguments, which I often have been. I've changed my mind in a council meeting because of what I consider to be really valid arguments from my fellow councillors and I would change my, my mind accordingly. I have received lots of information, uh, via text and, and, um, and email during council meetings on, on spec- on very specific issues and not, and not often. I can honestly say that, um, you know, that, that public information would be primarily almost always what I already had. Because if I, if I had the agenda ahead of time, I would have done my homework. So nor- noratively, but what has come in from the public from time to time were really, really valid points that were sometimes, um, missed. For instance, your video streaming has stopped. That's something that I've gotten on, on an email and that was good information because we didn't know that, that our video stream had stopped and the public could no longer see us or hear us. And so there's other ways of getting around that. For instance, we could make sure that, that there was a bulletin board, as you said before, that they could contact. But then not all people who watch meetings would necessarily understand that. But I, I think you make a point really worth considering into the future. Should all other electronic communication be put aside? However, I said, I do almost all my meetings paperless. So that's another problem. I wouldn't be able to avoid that. But I think, I think you bring up a really important consideration. I think that, um, you know, it's the same argument about, you know, who are you influenced by and through what methodology are you influenced? And I think each councillor has to decide that. It's a very personal thing. I, I'm happy to be influenced by my fellow councillors. That's why there's seven of us and not one of us. And, uh, and I think that that's extremely useful. And listening to constituents is also useful. Timing, uh, is immaterial to me. So it wouldn't matter if I was the first vote or the last vote. I would hopefully be able to stand by the vote that I made. But, uh, interesting conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other, uh, councillors who wanted to address councillor Wiley's question? I'll go to councillor Langmead and then we'll come back to you deputy mayor with some question.
Thank you, your worship. The, and, and thank you councillor Wiley for bringing this up. This is something that I had in, in my notes for today's meeting as well was, uh, was this idea of, you know, me- messaging, uh, either between councillors or members of the public, during meetings. I, personally, I'm uncomfortable with it. For the reason that, yes, they can bring some very good information and, and, and I do always want to hear from constituents. But I have also been on the receiving end, uh, and not, not during this term, uh, this council's term, but it, you know, uh, by previous members of, of the previous council, I have been on the receiving end where I have received unsolicited messages from councillors during council meetings. And, uh, you know, reaching out to me for asking for questions or asking for information. Or, or my opinion on something and I found it an uncomfortable situation. Uh, just, uh, just for the reason that that the, the information, you know, councillors should be coming into these meetings with the same information. Uh, you know, the, you know, if, if we're hearing feedback from the public, we should all be hearing that feedback. Um, you know, if someone's bringing information to the table, uh, you know, I, I would hope that we would all have, uh, you know, the same access to that information. Uh, you know, if they're sending studies and things, I, I would hope that we would ha- all have that same access. And also just from a, a respect perspective for my colleagues, uh, uh, that are, that, that are sitting with me on council. I, I would find it inappropriate for me to be reading or engaging in messaging with a person who is not, who's not in the meeting and, and therefore my attention is distracted, um, from the meeting and from what my colleagues are, are saying and, and their arguments or, or their, their concerns. Uh, personally, I, I would, I, I would support, um, a point saying that we, we refrain from, from texting or receiving personal messages, uh, during, during the period of council meetings. That, that, that's just my, my personal viewpoint on it. And, um, yeah, thank you for giving me an opportunity to share that.
Thank you, uh, councillor Wiley.
I joked with my wife that what would stop me then from starting a Facebook Live while I'm sitting in a council meeting and recording myself while the council's recording? And say, uh, I'm just going to do a poll on who'd prefer a traffic light and who would prefer the roundabout and, and I, you know, like, it, it's, it definitely can get to the point where it could become pretty extreme. So I would support something in this bylaw. Uh, that doesn't have to be have it handed, just like it's recommended that councillors abstain from using email and texting and other contacts with the public during, during the meeting, something like that. That would be my preference.
Is that something that can be workable, Jonathan? Or within the bylaw, does it have to be more firmly presented in a section?
Through your worship, um, I think we can add something that states that, uh, that, uh, council refrain from using, uh, cellphone, cellphones or, or email during the meeting and we can wordsmith it to make sure that doesn't, you know, prevent council from using their, their tablets or anything like that as well. But we can, we can look into a section that maybe would cover some of those concerns.
Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you. Um, so the only text messages I've ever received, um, during a council meeting are, are just as councillor Peterson said, somebody saying like, hey, I can't hear you or, or you know, there's some sort of a, a technical issue. Uh, there's been so many instances where I've had to go into my email to, you know, pull up an email and send it to the rest of council or to find information and share it with council. Uh, I don't think it's practical to say that we, we can't use devices and, and share information with each other. I agree that, you know, I, I think that while we're in council, we should be focused on the business of council and, and not taking, you know, personal, um, you know, personal calls, et cetera. Uh, but I don't think we should be limiting our, our, our ability to use our devices, uh, in order to share information or, or, you know, let's say, you know, quickly check something, you know, there's been instances where I've, uh, you know, had to double check some fact or something like that, you know, and being able to just kind of Google it quickly. I wouldn't want to limit other people from doing that and I personally wouldn't want to be limited myself from being able to do that. Uh, I think it makes me a better councillor to be able to kind of do these things. Um, that's my take on it.
You know, even in a, in a situation, you could be using your calculator for all we know and then you'd suddenly be feeling like you've done something horrible because you're trying to, maybe it's budget time and you're trying to look at, uh, ways to limit the tax or by reducing or eliminating something from the budget. Um, so yeah, it's, this is a tough one. Uh, so, um, so Jonathan, you're going to look at something as far as wording that could possibly come to us as far as a, a recommendation or a, but it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be a clear cut direction because I'm not sure that we would all support that at all as a group. Kara. I see you're here and you're with Legislative Services.
I'm just wondering if I can offer a bit of a, a compromise here, just recognizing what councillor Montgomery said, you know, about, about council sharing information, um, obviously amongst themselves. I think that that's, that's permissible. I think the, the bigger concern is really about those emails or texts coming from external parties. Um, in particular, I can think about one instance that I dealt with previously during my career of, of emails and text messages coming after a public hearing had happened as part of second and third reading. And that could potentially actually jeopardize the, the entire process, right? Under the MGA as council shouldn't be receiving new information after the public hearing. So I, I do think there, there is merit in, in adding something, um, particularly on the external side.
Thank you. So we'll leave that with you, Jonathan. And then I'll go back to, uh, the original order for questions and it was deputy mayor Montgomery next, followed by councillor Peterson.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I guess touch on, these things have already been kind of touched on, but I just wanted to, I guess, touch on them again or might give my take. Um, so what with ten point one about video on at all times? Uh, besides like just the technical issue of, of sometimes connectivity, um, any, anytime, for instance, like I'll, I'll just do it right now. Anytime I, I, you know, go up to the top of my screen, um, and my video can shut off, um, just from kind of touching, you know, the side of my screen, for instance, and, and it for some reason shuts the video off. Or if I have, I have to go and actually look at something else on my, on my, uh, you know, on my device. Like let's say go look at my emails, I have to minimize the zoom, uh, thing and then that automatically, you know, I'm assuming just shut my video off there. Um, so I don't think it's practical to have to ask, uh, council, um, you, you know, for, for the permission to, like, uh, unless we can think of reasons or, or times when we would actually say, hey, no, no councillor so-and-so, you can't shut your video off. I think we have to just kind of, uh, you know, we have to kind of trust each other and kind of give each other some leeway, I think, to use, uh, to man, like, you know, we're all adults and I think we need to, you know, we're all professionals or we're supposed to be professional adults. And, and so we have to, you know, at least trust that we're going to maintain some level of professionalism that isn't necessarily spelled out explicitly. Um, and so, and I, I, I personally, I don't see the difference between, uh, me calling in on the phone and me having my video off. Uh, you know, so like they're both, you know, I'm connected by audio in both those instances. And, um, and, and that's why, like, you know, un- unless we're going to say, hey, you know, you can't call in, you know, then, then why would we say you can't, you know, have your video off, you know, if, if you deem it's appropriate? Um, and so I, I, I don't, I personally would rather not have something in there saying that we can't shut our video off or that it has to be on at all times. Uh, because as I said, there's, there's many instances why it needs to be shut off necessarily. And, and you know, there's other instances too where, you know, like, I don't know, maybe I'm, you know, kind of, you know, repositioning myself or something like that, you know, and, um, but, yeah, so I think, I think, you know, and as professional adults, you know, we should be able to trust each other that if we are actually leaving, uh, the meeting, you know, per se, you know, we, we would actually inform, you know, administration or inform, you know, the chair of the meeting that, you know, hey, sorry, I have to step out. Um, I, I would much rather do that than saying, you know, like, uh, we have to, because, and just think about like, you know, in a, in a committee of the whole, for instance, how do we make a motion to allow somebody to shut their video off, you know? So it's like, do we, do we come out of committee of the whole or like, um, so there's just kind of other practical issues surrounding being able to make a motion to grant some of the ability to shut their video off. And I think it would be cumbersome to do so. Um, and so I, that's why I prefer to see that out. If anyone wants to, I guess, respond to that, uh, please do so.
I think you're, you're right, deputy mayor, that it comes down to trust and, and, you know, looking back, I, I don't want to dwell on the past, but in our past council, I, I do have to say this, we were having information leaking from our, from our in-camera meetings or so some of us thought. I mean, there were, there were people who seemed to know what we were discussing after certain meetings. And so when you get into a situation where, where trust is broken, then it affects how you view or how you, how you feel about the concept about the screen being on or not. Uh, I'm in a position of trust with this group, so I, I do, I do, uh, understand what you're saying for sure. And I understand totally what councillor Wiley is saying too, that, you know, we have a, we have a duty to our public and they, there is this idea that they'd like to see us and what we're doing on screen and they want to see us in action, I guess. So this is another one that's not that easy to just deal with quickly. Councillor Wiley. And then I'll go to Peterson.
I think just a slight wording change probably could fix this. If we go back to ten point one, right at the bottom of the page, it starts to say at the very bottom, the video must remain on at all. And it goes on to the next page. It should just say something like, uh, the video should remain on as much as possible with the obvious exception, you know, normal exceptions, like, uh, just something like that. But to just say the standard is the video's on and it doesn't need to say then a motion would need to be made. It just.
Yeah, I, I, I would totally be fine with that. Yeah.
The norm should be the videos on and then there's exceptions where, yeah, my cat jumped on the screen. I just needed, or I had to whip a kid or something and just, yeah. I didn't want that on camera.
Jonathan, are you able to wordsmith that, uh, kind of a change to that? Kara, I see you're nodding, so that's good. Uh, deputy mayor, did you want to follow up on that or did you have another question on another section?
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, can I pop in? I just have a comment to make on the video. Do you mind, uh, deputy mayor Montgomery? May I?
No, no, please.
Thank you. Um, I think there are, uh, two situations where it does make sense for us to ask that councillors have their camera on. One is in a public hearing when, uh, you know, there are legal consequences to not being pres- you know, physically present at the public hearing. I think it makes sense in that case that, that, uh, that we require cameras to be on just to confirm presence, uh, because I know that that is a thing. You must be there for the public hearing. Uh, if you're missing a portion of it, you know, or, or we can't confirm you were there for a portion of it. How can, you know, uh, can we say that you were there for the whole thing? And if you weren't there for the whole thing, can you vote on the thing that came out of it? Um, so I think that that's one situation where it makes sense to have, uh, you know, to say that cameras, uh, should absolutely, it should, should be on. Um, and then the other is, uh, just an in-camera, through an in-camera session to ensure that that person, uh, you know, is alone for the most part, especially if we're removing the whole, um, you know, signed affidavit. Uh, but, but I agree with you deputy mayor Montgomery. There are many situations where during the course of a regular meeting, you know, I might, I might have, uh, you know, I might have to readjust my clothing, readjust my positioning, uh, you know, I have, take a drink of some, you know, uh, you know, a reason to shut off the camera for a short period of time and, and, and we shouldn't need to make a motion for that. I, I completely agree with you on that. But I think those two situations, public hearings and, and, uh, in, in-camera items, uh, could, could be considered, uh, situations where, uh, I, I think it makes sense to ask that, that cameras are turned on a- as, as much as possible, barring of course, technical difficulties always happen. Thank you. Thank you for letting me jump in on that. I appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Yeah, I think that's, I think those are reasonable points. Um, and I guess like one follow-up I would ask is like, do you think like that we should be, uh, prohibiting the use of, uh, phoning in for instances where video must remain on?
I, I would, uh, in those two instances, public hearings and, and for, for in-camera items. Personally, I think, I, I wouldn't be comfortable call, I guess what I can say is I wouldn't be comfortable calling in and having, you know, and feeling comfortable that everybody else could confirm that I was meeting the requirements of being in attendance at all times. And, uh, and being alone. So I, I wouldn't feel comfortable phoning in in those two situations. That's all, that's all I can speak to.
Maybe it could be those instances where is somebody would need permission to either phone in, like a motion to phone in or a motion to have their video off. Cause like somebody could be calling from a landline, for instance, you know, because they don't have cell reception and they don't have, you know, video or something. And, and we would still want them to be a part of the meeting. We wouldn't want to prohibit their, their participation. So maybe then it would be by motion or something.
I could support that for sure.
Thank you. Uh, deputy mayor, did you have another question on Jonathan's presentation so far?
I do, but I, I think councillor Peterson wants to say something.
Councillor Peterson?
I just, just, your worship, a, a good example of last summer went, or late last spring and summer, when I was in the Northwest Territories and in the far reaches of British Columbia, I was phoning into meetings. And, and I couldn't, I just simply didn't have access lots of times to, um, to video. I just, I didn't have the, the juice to get by and even hot spotting on my phone, uh, wasn't. to video. I just, I didn't have the juice to get by, and even hot spotting on my phone wasn't always possible. And that's why I think that that when when Jonathan brought forward this potential bylaw, and talking about keeping a a declaration or a sworn affidavit, that has legal ramifications. And I really do believe that it brings a mindfulness to the table. It doesn't, if you were dependent, if you were determined to do what Counselor Wiley said, and and set up a Facebook page and do a a survey while you were in the midst of a meeting, there's nothing, no one is going to stop you from doing that. And in fact, maybe not in the midst of a council meeting, but we've actually had that happen on Facebook with surveys and so on. And and so I think that swearing a declaration or doing it via motion, as Counselor Montgomery has suggested, brings a mindfulness to the table that that is clear and definitive. And and there are repercussions for people who who don't abide and and who break, who breach that trust. And I really appreciate that. I also think that in a future year, it could be something that's drawn into the affirmation process, just in terms of decorum. And and I think that it could be utilized there.
Okay, thank you, Deputy, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, I was about to say you're next, and I stumbled there. Deputy Mayor Montgomery?
Yeah, and it was actually like Counselor Peterson, the fact that she had to call in, you know, last year, that's what kind of made me think about the fact that, you know, there are, there's so many instances where people just cannot access video. Yeah, and so I think that's, and as far as like the, all right, so I guess I'll jump next to the 10.6 about the the signing of statutory declaration. First of all, I think that that, you know, like, if that was to be done, that should apply to everybody, you know, whether it's like members of the public that are part of our closed meetings, staff, you know, everybody, in theory, if we were to do that. I personally think it's too onerous to kind of go down the road of having everybody swear every time we have, you know, people attending by by video or by by electronic means. But I do like the idea of what Counselor Peterson is saying about, you know, maybe it is a good idea just to, for the mindfulness to have, you know, people, you know, maybe, you know, us making a motion that, or even affirming, yeah, that I like, like, you know, I don't like the idea of us all having to pile into, you know, the town office every, you know, every week or something like that, to, you know, basically sign something and submit it. But, you know, there I'm fine with other things. I just want to make sure it's kind of a fairly, you know, easy process where we're still protecting the process. Thank you. And actually, yeah, so go ahead if you want to talk about that.
Thank you. Jonathan, did you want to address any of what you've heard?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just, I just want to summarize to make sure I'm understanding correctly what the changes we want to see in this bylaw. So 10.1, I'm hearing that counsel wants to make some changes there to say that, okay, yeah, video must be on for public hearings and closed sessions. And all other times, it'll be, we'll try our best to keep the video on. Is that correct? Something along those lines? Could we just add something there to say that, you know, if if I have to turn my video off because of connectivity issues or anything like that, you'll just let maybe the meeting know, just for the recording secretary mostly, just so I don't see, you know, your your videos off and say that you were out of the meeting or anything like that? Would that be fine? And then.
Question to that, your worship. Sorry, Jonathan, for interrupting. If we did that through it to the chat room, it would be part of the, it would form part of the record, then, wouldn't it, too?
Um, they, during the Zoom chat, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I honestly, I think it might be better just to say it out loud, just to say that I turned my video off, just so everyone can hear it. Because I don't know if everyone's checking the chats very often. I know I'm, I'm very bad at looking at chats. So, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, if I could say, the only, the only issue I have with that is just, as I said, sometimes, like, you you just, like, you know, you're flipping between screens or something. And so it's like, you know, you don't want to interrupt the meeting, but like, hey, sorry, I got to go check my email, you know? So maybe like, wouldn't it be easier if we just had, like, you know, people could just, if they're actually leaving, you know, the meeting, you know, stepping out, then they would say that they're doing that, rather than just, you know, every time our our screen is changing, we would have to say something.
Through your worship, I think that's a great idea, too. Yeah, if you want to do that, that makes total sense, too. Just just to make it easier, just so I don't, you know, accidentally say that, you know, see your, you're flipping your screen and say that you left the meeting for whatever period of time, just any way to make it clear for us, I think it'd be great.
Okay.
Counselor Wiley might have a comment that ties into this.
Well, actually, I like the solution, but I was going to request later on in this, I want to put in a tech request that if we're going to have to keep doing these online, these lives, or sorry, these streaming meetings, I would like a second monitor. It's, it would be very useful.
That's a very good idea. I, you know what, Counselor Wiley, I use three screens while we're meeting, like this.
Is that?
You never mind, never mind. I have a techie husband. That's good. But it's useful. One for research, one for the agenda, and one to look at your pretty face, Mr. Man.
Um, thank you, Counselor Wiley. That makes a lot of sense, too, depending on how this pandemic goes. We're not quite sure how long we might be doing these Zoom meetings. Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Montgomery, did you have another question for Jonathan as far as his his presentation so far, or can he move on?
Uh, yeah, no, that's fine. I'm, I'm, the only one thing that I we kind of skipped past was with Section 4.4, just about suspending the bylaw. Should we kind of say that that has to be, you know, maybe a vote of four people, rather than just a majority, you know, of the people at the meeting, you know, like, we wouldn't want to say three people suspending the bylaw, would we? So if we had four, then at least that's a majority of counsel. Or like, could you maybe tell me like what what an instance when we would need to, or would we, when we would want to suspend this bylaw?
Through, through the chair, um, may, an instance, an instance that we may want to suspend the bylaw is if we're meeting, maybe today, go where it's at 9:59, and we have a couple of items left on the agenda we really want to discuss. This bylaw says that we have a hard stop at 10:00 PM. That could be a section of the bylaw that we maybe want to suspend the rules for and waive that section to continue the meeting on.
Okay. Sorry. Oh, yeah, one of the thing, I was going to actually suggest that we have a mechanism in the bylaw to allow us to go past 10. But if that's, I guess if that's what you're suggesting, then.
Yeah, yeah. And right now, it'd be just a simple majority. So if seven counselors are there, four votes would be able to, you would be able to suspend that, that section of the bylaw. Similarly, if only four counselors are there, we would need three votes at that point. So that's the way it is currently. The council wants to increase that to say two thirds. We can look into that. I I personally would recommend just a simple majority vote, but this is council's bylaw, and definitely we're open to suggestions.
Okay, like, I understand, you know, suspend, yeah, like certainly suspend, you know, the part about, you know, the meeting shutting down, but you know, it sounds like we're almost suspending the whole bylaw, in which case, you know, it's entered, I'm joking, of course, but you know, it's, but anyways, thank you. I'll leave it to you.
Thank you. Counselor Peterson, a question or?
No, your worship, the only, the only thing I have left in in the lineup is is just now, with regards to the issue of adding something to this bylaw that says that counsel may not access their emails or text messages, both of them come in on on the system that I use. It would be impossible to block it. I think, as Counselor Montgomery said, it becomes a an issue of trust and integrity, and legislating it is is, I think, not useful. In in council meetings, I I use eプロxy sites to chat, to fact check. I use them all the time. I use them during meetings. I I use my calculator during budgets, and I I'm, I'm on the system. Certainly doesn't mean that I'm engaged, or I'm, I'm engaging in things that are lacking in integrity. And so I think that that it's not useful to try to legislate that that sort of thing. I do like the idea of of counselors having access to a second screen if they need it. And I really, that's all I have, your worship.
Thank you. Jonathan, did you want to carry on with your presentation then for the next section?
Oh, I have one more thing, your worship, one more thing. And it and it isn't necessarily need, Jonathan doesn't need to, or Kara, need to answer it tonight. But I've referenced it a few times in this meeting, and I don't have a fulsome answer. And that is, when it, when it comes to 10.6 and a declaration or affidavit, swearing that affidavit, there there are legal considerations. And I think it's important that this council should know what they are, if that's something that's going to remain in the bylaw.
So are you saying that there are legal considerations that could that could be negative towards someone if if that affidavit was sworn?
Not at all, your worship. I, what I'm saying is that if people breach the the considerations around closed session, if there is a, it is a deliberate breach of that, and they have sworn an affidavit, there, as Doug Legore, as former CEO Legore, explained to us prior to this council sitting, there are very serious considerations and ramifications as a result of doing that. I think it's good for council to know that information. And I understand that there are, that there is a spectrum that is involved in that process as well.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan?
Through your worship, I guess I would have two questions for counsel. The first one is, yeah, definitely, Counselor Peterson, we can definitely provide a report to counsel and just make sure it's very clear and on point. I wouldn't want to speak to it off the top of my head at this very moment, if that's okay. The second question is, does counsel actually want to leave that item in the agenda? Do we want to say that just kind of affirm at the start of an in camera session that you are alone? Or do you want to keep that, maybe this swearing an oath before commissioner votes in the in the bylaw?
Counselor Peterson?
Your worship, I have two minds. I I'm, I I was okay with what Counselor Montgomery said about affirming, about that, at the end of the day, and I hate that thing, but we all, we all need to to be aware of our own accountability issues. But you and I both know that there's been some serious travesty and nothing that anybody could have anticipated or expected. And I don't know that this would have prevented it, but it certainly would have created a cautionary process that did not exist in previous councils. And and so I think that that it has some usefulness that bears some greater and deeper thought going forward.
If I could jump in, something, sorry, do you mind if I jump in?
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you. It just occurred to me that, like, you know, we're trying to protect, you know, like, let's say, the sanctity of of closed meetings, obviously. And and, you know, the problem generally doesn't arise from, you know, having somebody else in the room when we're in a closed meeting, like, that's, you know, that's usually not the problem, or historically hasn't been the problem. The problem's been, you know, taking that information and then spreading it after the meeting, okay? So swearing that we're alone during the meeting, I mean, that's kind of the piece of cake part, you know, like, that's, so that's, that's almost like, that should be a given, you know, it, that would be, it would be, you know, kind of abnormal almost to have, you know, somebody from the public in our, in our home, you know, while we're having a meeting, right? So that's why I don't, I don't necessarily, like, I understand what we're trying to do, but I don't think that we're, you know, necessarily kind of, you know, pointing our efforts in the right direction if we were to kind of, you know, go down the road of having people signing a declaration. I think, you know, we're all supposed to be bound by, you know, rules that say we do not share, you know, privileged information. And and to me, like, that's, you know, that's as good as, I believe we take an oath even, but like, you know, that, to me, that's kind of what governs my time on council is is when, you know, just that overarching rule. So for, to me, like, you know, having, that's why I'm saying it's onerous for me to have to, you know, go down and, you know, kind of go through the process of doing something that I'm already, I'm already kind of doing. And like I said, it's, it's not really kind of, it's not really taking care of, you know, the issue or the issues that we've kind of dealt with in the past. I wouldn't be ameliorated by this particular rule. So it's, it's probably somewhat unnecessary, I would say, for those reasons.
Okay, thank you.
If I might step in, I would, I would disagree, because we have no guarantee. And in fact, we have, there are some strong indications in my time on council that in terms of people phoning into meetings, particularly, that there were other people present. And so I think swearing a declaration before a commissioner of the oaths, or commissioner of oaths, is is a mindfulness action. The other part of what Counselor Montgomery referenced, I think he's right in that it's already covered in the code of conduct and in the affirmation document that we sign. But I think that both have a place. And and while we can sit here and say that, you know, this, this seems, you know, a wonderful council with with all kinds of capacity to to do all the right things as is needed, that doesn't speak, this bylaw doesn't speak to just this council, and neither does it bind future councils, I understand that. But it, there is a a consideration for that.
Okay, I'll go now to Kara, who might be able to offer some good insight.
I just wanted to remind counsel, too, that that each counselor does have a legislative duty and requirement not to disclose information that is shared. And that's contained within the MGA, right? So just to Counselor Montgomery's point about, you know, sharing information, that would already be captured under under the MGA. So I think if if counsel, you know, it seems like there's kind of some, some in favor of a declaration, some some not. I think the affirmation might be a good kind of maybe middle, middle ground, and and maybe just for documentation purposes, what we, what we could propose is actually recording that that affirmation was was made in the in the minutes. And then, again, there's just a record of it somewhere that that had been made. So that that's just another option, I guess. I just want to throw out to counsel.
And hopefully, this is, you know, a temporary situation where we have to do these Zoom meetings, and then, you know, we're and again, you want to start with a position of trust, for sure. So are we comfortable with this 10.6, or are we thinking that it should be, we should be directing Jonathan to remove this section?
I thought Kara said a good compromise.
Yeah, I I agree, your worship. Kara's compromise is a very good.
I agree, too. Okay, that's good then. That's good. Okay, good. All right, Jonathan, did you want to carry on then?
I can carry on, your worship. However, I think a lot of these discussions have preempted a lot of my presentations. So at this point, maybe it's a good time just to open up the floor to counsel if there's any sections that they would like to review maybe more closely, we can.
Exactly what I was wondering about. Thank you. Counselor Wiley, then Counselor Langmead.
Okay, so I've, I've quite a few, but I just want to preface by saying this was excellent. Like, I was able to read this as a, it's logical, it made sense, it was well written. I just really, really appreciated the work that went into this. But I I'll go to 8.2. There was one I thought should be added here. So it talks about there'll be no scheduled meetings in August. Do you remember this year how the first meeting of January, we decided to counsel, cancel for the sake of administration? You know, they're coming back from vacation, da, 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 da. I wondered if we could just make that a permanent thing, as well as the first, the first meeting in January.
Well, I see. So it's a, you know, we're in a way, yeah, you're you're designating that time period after the Christmas break, then? It's going to be kind of entrenched?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
For the sake of the administration, and they're not rushing back after New Year's in order to get, get prepared for the meeting.
Sounds good.
The next one was 8.3. Again, it says posting a public notice on the front foyer of the municipal building. I think that's great, but could we also put it on the website? Okay, does anyone else want to, like, I've got probably 10 things I could go through. Just, how do we want to split this up?
Why don't we, we, at one point, Counselor Wiley, the previous council had been given, you know, suggestions that a person would do three questions in a row, so that you're not stacking the questions, and we'd move on and come back to you after everyone's asked. So why don't we do one more from you? And if we want to put that into our procedural bylaw, too, as far as number of questions asked in a row by a counselor, it might do, might do a lot as far as efficiency of meetings and that sort of thing. So go on to your next one then.
Sure. So I'll ask this one and then give the floor to someone else, but I will, I'll probably have some more. So I'm going to go all the way to 12.9. This is about the public. This is about the public hearings. Melissa, Counselor Langmate, sorry, already referred to this one tonight. I just don't understand this. I just was hoping someone could explain to me. Why? Why would a counselor have to be at the public hearing? Why couldn't they just read about it or watch the video? Like, I just, I don't quite understand this. I haven't been part of this process, I guess.
Did everybody's screen change? Hello?
No.
Yeah, I just wondered if someone could help explain or help me understand that.
Thank you. I thought my screen left there. Kara, did you want to speak to that?
Absolutely. So the intention of this is because the M G A actually prohibits. Council from voting on second and third reading of a bylaw that has gone to a gone to a public hearing. And so this is just again, to to publicly declare why you're not, why you wouldn't be voting at that time again, just just for record keeping and full transparency to the public. So it doesn't look like there's not that perception that you're that somebody's abstaining from a vote.
Okay, thank you. And I'll I'll give the floor to someone else.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. We go now to Counselor Langmead and then Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that I like the idea of adding in maybe a question limit. Because I know that I have kind of a list here and I will be sticking to the three. I think that's good for efficiency. My first one, my first question is for number three point seven. When the mayor, the mayor shall preside when in attendance at the meeting of council and the mayor's absence, the deputy mayor shall preside over the meeting. Should we, one of my question was, should we consider adding the same clause as we're considering adding to? The code of conduct by law, whereas if both the mayor and the deputy mayor are unavailable. Who decides, you know, how it's decided who the chair will be? Is it a vote of council or is it at the mayor's discretion? I know in the code of conduct by law, we kind of discussed at our last meeting. Making it so that it's at the mayor's discretion. The mayor can ask for someone else to be the chair of the meeting.
And I know that's, you know, it's a good point, Counselor Langmead. And I know in my situation, I just automatically have gone to the next person in the rotation. But if I I see what you want, I see what you're saying that we should probably spell that out a little more clearly.
And I I think it's a good chance for consistency with the code of conduct by law. Although I I I am absolutely open to other other ideas there as well. Is there any discussion on that question before I move forward?
I'm good.
I think Jonathan wants to say something, I think.
Jonathan.
Through the chair. So generally, what I've seen a lot of bylaws is that. If both the mayor and the deputy mayor are not present for the meeting, a presiding officer would be chosen by the rest of council through a motion. Is that what we want to have included? Or do we want to have it delegated to? I'm sorry, I just need some clarity there.
Personally, I'm kind of okay with either approach. I just think it should be spelled out what the next step is. So that we're all very clear in in the unlikely case that that happens. But if it does, then we know how to proceed.
I like how Pat's been doing it, you know, Jonathan, where he just. Appoints the next person in line. It's a really structured, sensible process.
And then if you do have a council that's a bit split or a bit broken, then. You're not getting into a situation where a mayor is trying to, you know, stack things as far as running the meeting. In his or her favor and and, you know, following along the lines of of. Searching for a word. Loyalties, you know, and you don't want to get into that. I don't think I just want to go on to whoever is the next deputy mayor and let that person, whoever it is, take over. Deputy Mayor, I think you had a comment or something there.
Yeah, like I I think it has to be something that's spelled out like as either it's the next person in like the deputy mayor rotation. If the deputy mayor and mayor are not there or or it goes to a vote. Because I'm just thinking like I'm thinking of an instance where like, you know, if if there if their deputy mayor isn't isn't at the meeting, you know, and the and the mayor has to step out for some reason. Then you would you would want, basically what I'm thinking is that if you don't have a mechanism for the council to choose a chairperson. You know, if the mayor isn't there to pick a chairperson, then you can't, the council wouldn't be able to pick a chairperson essentially. So I think it'd be better to have, you know, at least some mechanism for the council to be able to pick a chairperson. In the event that there is not somebody that can be, you know, stepping in for some other reason, right? So we just want to make sure there's a mechanism for that to happen.
For my for my second question, I just want to make sure that I understand, and I I don't think that this is a change or anything, but I just. Some clarity on section thirty four point two, sub sub point A. Where it says, no member shall reflect upon any vote of council. Except for the purpose of moving that such a vote be rescinded or reconsidered. I just want to make sure that I fully understand the meaning of that statement and and what it. What I'm living up to in there in that statement. Jonathan, maybe you can help me?
Can you? Sorry, can you just say that section number again?
It's it's thirty four point two subsection A.
Okay, thank you.
And I think what it's trying to get at is that we're not constantly revisiting items like I'm not bringing back a discussion on. The roundabout when we've decided the round, you know, the roundabout versus traffic lights thing. But I just want to make sure that I fully understand that.
Through the chair, I think that section also is referring to that when a decision of councils made that's made by the entirety council. So no councilor can say that that was, they can kind of maybe. Maybe speak or comment on the intentions of the rest of council who proved it, maybe if they were in the. The losing side of the vote and things like that. So we that I guess that section's more in regards to once a decision's made. All of council owns that decision and that you're not going to go and reflect and maybe comment on that decision.
Counselor Langmead, I can I can give you my own personal example. We had a this a thing happen in the last term where I was. This was pointed out to me by people who were watching that I verbally had an editorial comment and I said a very sarcastic thing when I felt. There should have been some sort of a decision based on on counselor's behavior. Nothing was done, so I made an editorial comment and I shouldn't have done that for sure, but I did, I made an editorial comment. So this would this would. Be a section in the bylaw where that would be spelled out to a person. And I'll say it again, it was me, that that sort of editorial comment shouldn't be made.
Okay, I guess where I'm reflecting on this and and. I'm worried about something that I I may have said, to be honest. After after the roundabout vote, I did a little update post on Facebook and and how I worded it was. While I personally was in favor of the roundabout, this is what council decided. I support that decision moving forward. Is it? Is it fair for for a counselor to be able to state, hey, I, you know, this wasn't my, you know, this wasn't my. Desired outcome, but I respect the decision of council and and moving forward from there with that. I want to ensure that I I I would never violate this portion. That's why I'm asking the question. If Jonathan or maybe Kara or someone could. Would that, am I on the right track there? Am I understanding that correctly? Have I, if I've made an error, I'm fully willing to admit to it and and correct it.
Through the chair, yeah, just kind of, I'm kind of thinking back to our legal orientation, we kind of discussed that this is a when a decision by councils made that that's now your decision as as a counselor, you own it. You know, of course, there's going to be sometimes, you know, you may comment that, yeah, it might be in the minutes or in the video that you did vote against the motion. But just as long as you kind of aren't maybe, as the mayor said, editorializing the decision or anything like that. As long as you're kind of clear that this is the decision of council, you own it as as a counselor, moving forward, that was a decision. I don't know if maybe if this response to comment on that, if I'm missing anything.
C A O Scooball might have some insight for us.
No, no, I I wouldn't see any issues with that comment, the way it was post or posted on on social media. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a public record how you voted on that matter. And then you pretty much just reiterated that and supported the decision of council. So I wouldn't see any issue with that.
And you weren't criticizing the vote or anything?
No, just stated stating facts and and that. Okay, okay, so I understand that section. And then for my final one, this will probably be, well, I I'm expecting discussion on this one. And that's on line twenty nine point two. Where before a vote is taken by council, a counselor may request that the vote be recorded. And I know that this was a discussion, I believe, with the previous council, but this council has not had this discussion yet. And that is. Can can we or should we be doing that? For for all decisions, should the votes be recorded for all decisions and be made public? I know that they are already public through the through the fact that we have these meetings publicly. They're recorded meetings and we share them online, so anyone can look up to see what someone's voting record is. It just takes a lot of time. Personally, my point of view on this is I I am a big fan of transparency on on what decisions I've made. And and I'm willing to stand behind any vote, any vote I make in council and and justify why that vote was made. Just I I guess I'm looking to open up that discussion within within the counselors and, you know. Just so that we have the discussion, is this something that we want to do for all decisions? Do we? Do we want only to request that we record the vote or should all votes be recorded?
Well, when we were first, I can weigh in quickly, when we first were coming to this new building and everything was planned. And and the the council chambers was being laid out for I T and video and everything. We were told that eventually or very quickly, we'd be into a situation where we would vote electronically on everything. And it would automatically record the people's votes. That hasn't come to fruition yet. I'm not sure how how it'll be as far as the the I T department moving forward. I know there have been some requests of funding for improvements in certain areas. But that could be something that is solved by that. I'll go to Kara. Maybe you can add to that.
So I think just based on like, one thing that John and I have been reviewing is is the software that's being used by by the town. We both have experience with alternative software that is significantly less. And and so I do think that's something that we would like to explore. And so it was actually a decision that we made not to proceed with investing time and effort in terms of moving forward with the electronic voting system. That ties to the existing software, given that we might be looking at at an alternative solution at that. Like going forward, in terms of recorded votes on on every vote, I I would, I guess, kind of caution council this not. It's not considered best best practice. And I would say it's probably something that that should be used, you know, sparingly and and strategically. I I could see it maybe causing some some divides amongst council and and things. And so I just, I guess I just want to, I just want to put that out there as well.
Yeah, and it can be used. I've seen it used in my first term on council. I've seen it used almost as a political weapon. Where someone wants to kind of prove to the public that this vote. Is a certain way, you know, I don't know how to explain it other than it it can be used to kind of single out a person. And or single out people who are against, not necessarily against what you're saying, but may not be in line with your vote. So I've seen it used that way and it's it's a, it's not always a pleasant situation.
And and absolutely, I I agree that 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 could absolutely be an unpleasant situation. And that that's why. And and my mind's not made up on on either direction on this. I'm I'm excited to have this discussion. Part of the reason why I was asking is should it be done for every vote is to actually remove. That sense of, you know, holding someone to account. If everything is recorded, then there's no, you know, then there is no opportunity to come in and say, fine. I want this vote recorded so that I can show everybody how so counselor so and so show so and so voted against this thing. If everything is recorded, then it's no longer a weapon. It can't be weaponized. Because, you know, we're not making a point of 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 ha- having council vote on whether a vote should be. Recorded or not. Like I said, I haven't made up my mind either way. Does anybody else have any other perspective to add on this?
I was just going to ask Kara, as far as the electronic voting. Is there a different software you're considering where there may be electronic voting, just not tied to the existing software we have?
Yes, so the alternative solution that we are looking at does have the ability for electronic voting as well, if that's something that council wants to to explore as well.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Just with regards to Counselor Langmead's point, I I I'll be honest, I didn't, I don't know enough about, you know, why. You know, why the things are basically, you know, not recorded votes most of the time. Like, there's got to be some reason why, you know, most institutions go with non-recorded votes. And having recorded votes is kind of like, you know, an anomaly almost. So I would have to look further into that just for my own, you know, edification to figure out why, you know, what some of the reasons are for. For because otherwise you would think, you know, you would think that, you know, why not have yet recorded both all the time? So I would have to look into that further, I guess, just to be able to give you some sort of a better opinion on that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor? Is that okay, Counselor Langmead? Do we move on? Did you have another question you wanted to ask or we?
Those were my three, and if that's the discussion on the topic, then I'm happy to pass the mic along.
Perfect. Counselor Wiley, did you have a?
Yeah, in regards to that, I would like to have that maybe as a future item is, can we bring that back up again? Is I I'm really interested too. It's something I was baffled by is why didn't we always record the vote? And I know as a citizen, I would have liked to have been able to see quickly, like as a quick reference.
And maybe that still could be occurring for our for our future together as a group. Jonathan?
Through the chair, I think one of the reasons why I think usually you request a recorded vote as opposed to just having it there. Just a typical vote is that you want to, you want to make sure it's clear that decisions of council are made by all of council and not by these four counselors too. So just have that kind of, you're acting as a unitary body at that point. That's probably the general reason why most institutions or most municipalities don't make every vote a recorded vote. So just for for me selfishly, is this something that council wants to see changed in the bylaw? Do they want to make, do they want to see a change to twenty nine point two or when we do bring it back in the next couple of weeks or? Leave it as is?
I don't want it to see it changed because there's probably a good reason for it to be like that, like you said, but I wouldn't mind revisiting. I don't know. What does the rest of council think?
And again, we may find that this is not even, it's a moot point, like it's not necessarily if we go to electronic tabulating of votes. This may not even be an issue. Not that it is an issue, but it would it would just be an automatic thing done anyway. There would be a quick recording of it.
Yeah, I think for me, it's it's whether it's included in the minutes or not, you know, we can, we can vote electronically and and still maybe not not make that information. You know, available through the minutes or whatnot. I don't think there's any change that needs to be made today. I just wanted to have the conversation. With council since we are in committee of the whole and I had the, you know, the the ability to have the conversation about it and I appreciate that. I think it is a topic that I I would like to see revisited later, maybe once we have come along a little further on the electronic tabulating. And to just revisit this and and see where council sits with it then.
Thank you, Counselor Langmead. Deputy Mayor, did you have, yeah, I think you haven't gone to you in a little while for your questions.
Yeah, thank you. I'll raise a few, I guess. So with seventeen point five, it just has to do with the the agenda deadline. Submissions. Yeah, it just says like in accordance with the the council agenda deadline calendar that is approved by this. So first of all, I guess I, you know, I was wondering, you know, where where exactly this C A O. Deadline is or the where the, sorry, the council agenda deadline calendar is. But the other thing I was going to say is what I found in the last term is that. I I personally believe that we should be able to submit agenda items up until, let's say, noon of the Thursday prior to the meeting. And I say the Thursday because it historically, it's been Wednesday. We have until the Wednesday to submit things. But then, you know, something will happen at a council meeting and then, you know, like, you know, that night or the next day, you're like, oh, you know, I I. And then, you know, like, you know, that night or the next day, you're like, oh, you know, I I I wanna submit something for the next meeting. And it's already too late at that point unless you wanna bring it on as like an emergent item. Um, so I was thinking that we could, you know, just make the deadline for uh submitting items the Thursday at noon. Let's say, prior to the meeting um, in rather than having it, you know, referred to a calendar, let's say.
Any discussion on that one? Uh, it's, I like the idea too. It gives, as as long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't create uh or is onerous for our staff as far as getting the agenda put together and and put out to everyone uh in the public and everything too, that would, that would be the only thing I would wanna make sure that it's uh, it's not gonna affect them too much in a negative way.
Yeah, and yeah, and if administration, if they see a problem with it, then, yeah.
Good men would like to comment or respond?
Well, I guess my only comment would be sometimes, you know, in principle, no issue with that. It's just sometimes it might be difficult to to get a fulsome report together for council. So if council's recognizing of that, certainly not an issue. I mean, we'll do our best, but, you know, there may be some information we may not be able to collect as fulsomely, fulsomely as we would like to in advance.
And that would be like one of those situations where you would, you would tell us in the meeting whether it's a quick answer, or it's gonna take a while, or they're making funds involved. Okay, thank you. Does that help Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's, that that would be great.
Sorry, Jonathan, you're gonna look at uh uh possibly move moving that to the Thursday before the next public meeting? Having that.
I'm sorry, I threw the chair, yeah, we can uh, so, two things. Uh, the first thing is I'll definitely share the uh the deadline calendar with all of council, either later today or earlier tomorrow morning. Just so you guys are aware of it, and we'll make sure it's saved in the M files vault that you guys have access to as well. Um, second point is, um, just, we can definitely um make sure that we kind of have that more flexibility for council. Maybe it is Wednesday or Thursday, as this deputy mayor Montgomery has said. You know, the, I guess the point here, though, is that as long as you're going through the ops of the C A O, we can be very flexible. And it may be that you kind of bring it to the C A O's attention, and he says that, you know, yeah, we have this on the agenda, but it might need to take another week or so to get it on, just depending on staff time and time that we need to uh to uh use for that item. So that's just my one comment on that.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, your next question?
Um. Yeah, so seventeen point eight A, uh I think this just has to do with uh putting stuff on the agenda. Uh, and we kind of discussed this before, and especially at that, um, sorry, I think it's Eli, was it? Um, and uh so what I was thinking is is that we should have uh it, you know, say that you have to have four votes to get it on the agenda rather than just a majority of the people at the meeting, which could be three. Because, uh, you know, as we've kind of discussed, it's possible then for three people to put something on the agenda and pass it and bind the municipality in some sort of a contract, let's say, that the majority of council doesn't actually agree with. So we should make sure that anything that is, you know, kind of going ahead at a meeting actually does have the support of the majority of councils who at least, you know, just to prevent, like, just to protect the process, let's say. Uh, it would be prudent, I think, to have that outlined as as for people to add something to the agenda.
Any uh discussion points on that one? I guess that would ensure that you have at least um two thirds or sixty seven percent of the vote in order to uh to get that item put on the agenda.
Well, Eli, at least just a majority of council, right? Then, if, as long as it's a majority of council, then it's legitimate, right? So.
Okay, councillor Langmead a comment?
Yeah, just a comment on that one. I ca- I can absolutely see where Deputy Mayor Montgomery is coming from on that one. I think it it kind of raises a second question then as well that you know, it, because a quorum for for our meetings would be four. Um, and if we're saying that, you know, three out of the four people can't make a decision uh to add something to the agenda, then would that not cast doubt on any decision uh made during that meeting that was passed, uh, you know, with a majority of votes present at that meeting, you know, three out of four? Um, you know, if if three out of four can't add to the agenda, then can three out of four even make a decision? Um, if we're not accepting that as as a majority of the councillors present? Just a question.
Yeah, so so basically, the idea that that I'm thinking is, so there's there's instances where council members cannot make it to a meeting. And if they knew that there was going to be an agenda item that was, you know, like, very, you know, serious or that, you know, potentially could be controversial, you know, maybe they would miss, you know, like, for instance, that, you know, I went to that A U M A webinar last week, you know. And if I if I knew that you guys were gonna be, you know, like, you know, say, putting something on the agenda to, you know, do X, Y, or Z. You know, maybe I would have skipped that meeting and come to the meeting so that I could vote on that thing. And so the the problem is, you could have, you know, three council members, which is a minority, take advantage of a situation of, uh, you know, just kind of, uh, you know. And we've had many instances where meetings where we did have two or three council members not there. And so it would be, it would be, I I think, abuse of of, you know, the process to to say, yeah, those, you know, those three people could seize that opportunity. And and like I said, the problem is, they could bind the municipality in some sort of a contract that that could not be gotten out of basically without some sort of trouble. Um, and that's not a majority that that would be, you know, necessarily in favor. So um, that's that's where I'm kind of seeing it from.
Okay, I can understand that better. Thank you.
Uh councillor Peterson?
Your worship to to councillor Montgomery's point. Uh, I think that one of the things that happened in our in our last council, even when it went, even when council was at its very, very most divisive. If we had council members who said, I'm very passionate about this, and I can't attend this meeting. Is there a possibility that council could hold this item over? I don't remember a single time when we didn't do that, when of a request. You might have a better recollection than me. But maybe to councillor Montgomery's point, if that was the case, maybe there's something that can be written into a procedural bylaw that says, if if a councillor cannot attend, do they have the option of petitioning council to hold an item over, and on a two thirds majority, that could happen? And and it and it's not specific to councillor Montgomery's issue, but it is something that speaks to the broader perspective of of um of those really, really important issues that sometimes come before council and the respect that we have for each others as um legislative representatives of community to be able to to um represent to their very best potential. I have no strong feelings either way, but I do see it as something that is uh that could be potentially useful.
That that two thirds majority, can it not be the the measure that dictates whether an item is gonna be brought forward or put on the agenda? For example, if you have five people at council, three out of five would be sixty percent. So they would fall short of that sixty seven point whatever percent. And then if you have uh four people at council, like councillor Langmead was saying, then three out of four would be seventy five percent. So you would, you would be well within that two thirds. So can we not use that two thirds of whatever number of council is there as the measuring stick to add as items to an agenda?
Um, well, I like, as I said, like, the only issue I see with that is then you have a, you, it's possible, it's technically possible to have a minority of council um basically bind the municipality in some sort of a situation that maybe the majority of council does not actually uh agree with. And it's, and and to councillor Peterson's point, you know, she's, I believe, she's talking about um something that's already on the agenda, having that kind of delayed so that people can, you know, all weigh in on it versus adding something, you know, su- surprise something, you know, to the agenda when, you know, basically opportunistic. Uh, you know, to take advantage of a lack of councillors there. So um I I can see what councillor Peterson's saying. It would be, you know, beneficial to have, you know, like, it'd be nice if we could, you know, say, yeah, hey, would you guys mind? You know, kind of waiting on this, um, you know, so that I can be there for the for the discussion and for the for the vote. Um, I I think that there's there's, you know, merit to that. My 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 issue is kind of the opposite almost, where it's like, I don't want people, I don't want, I don't want it to be technically possible for there to be an abuse of the process by a minority of council essentially. If if, you know, if 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 five people show up and the agenda is what it is, and then three vote a certain way, that's totally legitimate. That's the fu- that's a legitimate vote. Uh, um, the problem is if 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 you have five people show up and then three people put something on the agenda, um, you know, they go, hey, let's give ourselves a raise. And, you know, and all of a sudden, you know, next thing you know, everybody on council has a raise, when, you know, maybe four people don't really want the raise, you know. So um, there's just, there's potential for abuse by a minority if we ha- if we don't have that. And I think it has to be four, um, because that would be um the, that would be the kind of the minimum threshold to to have councils, uh, a majority of council at least approve it.
Any other comments?
How how does the M G A speak to this? Like, I I just, I just see it as being really onerous. If I, if I take it to some logical spaces, I can see problems. Like, I see, you know, in the middle of COVID, you know, a pandemic, people being sick, you know, trying to get quorum sometimes could be difficult. And so if you have quorum, you have the right to halt business. And I guess, I guess the the M G A, I think, speaks to that. And uh, it's definitely something, I I understand councillor Montgomery's point. It's really legitimate. But I I don't know that it is conducive to business always.
Jonathan, any comments from a M G A point of view?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, um, so this this really is up to council on how they want their procedure bylaw to look. Um, our current bylaw does say two thirds. We are suggesting a simple majority. And this is done actually after consulting with uh Ellie Mina. Um, I spoke with him last week, and he kind of reiterated his his perspective that he doesn't like two thirds votes generally because he thinks that they become easily a tyranny of minority. So uh, we do have a simple majority in the bylaw as is. I do think that this is actually a really interesting discussion, because I I get everyone's perspective on this. Um, and, you know, to be fair, two, four votes would be a majority for, you know, six councillors present. So really, what, I guess it really only kicks in if we have two members absent from the meeting. So um, it really is up to council on how they would like to see this item going forward. This, this is something that you guys have complete jurisdiction over in your procedure bylaw. Um, the one thing I just wanted to ask councillor Peterson if that's okay. When you talk about um, if you're away from a meeting petitioning uh two thirds of council to postpone an item, would that just similar as just asking council to postpone the item? Um, that could happen just during a simple majority vote during a meeting.
And and that's exact, you know what, Jonathan, I just looked back in my old agendas, and that is exactly what happened. And sometimes, I think it was also maybe not done um in a vote. Sometimes it was just done by simple consensus. And and it was generally, um, like I said, even in the most divisive of times, it was, it was very uh this passionate commitment to representation, um, I think, under the leadership of the day uh was well taken. And uh, I I don't know if mayor would feel the same way, but uh, I think it was uh I I would agree with you. I think simple majority, if 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 it was taken to vote, would be fine.
Yeah, I can, and I can see uh deputy mayor's Montgomery's point of view too. If you have a, if you have a split council, you know, if this can be, this can be a thing that is used by a smaller group to try to influence things. And and then again, you have the larger group that may influence things if they're unified together. Uh, it, it's just like, we we're seeing what can happen in the worst case scenarios. That's the, that's the situation we're kind of looking at, you know, what if this situation comes up? Is that gonna be a a situation where three out of five try to dictate, you know, and 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 do their, do their work when they know two people are away? That's and that's unfortunately the situation that can sometimes arise. Deputy Mayor Montgomery?
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting at all that this would, this would happen, you know, with this council. I look at this almost like, this is like kind of something, to me, this is something to protect the process. This is what this document is meant to do in a lot of ways, is protect processes. And and so it's it's not meant necessarily to speak to any individual, you know, group of people. This is almost like, to me, it's like a constitution kind of where it's like, this is putting protections around the process so that no matter who is in the seats, it it would just, it can't be abused. Um, and it can't, you won't like, you know, that, no matter, so basically, yeah, because you never like, you know, we all, like, you know, we know better than, you know, a lot of people that, uh, you you can't predict how things are gonna be, you know, a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. So that's why I think it's important to put something in place. And and to your point, you know, if 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 the majority, you know, does, you know, wanna throw their weight around, that's, you know, in a democracy, that's still legitimate, you know, and and that's, that's, you know, that's the way the cookie crumbles, I guess you could say. It's it's not legitimate if a minority is able to, you know, basically, uh, and like I said, you know, it it's one thing if, you know, i- it's one thing for, and the other thing too is, I don't think that reasonably, if three people wanna put something on the agenda, if it's kind of innocuous or if it's important or, you know, whatever, um, I don't think it's probably gonna get, you know, like, that one person who's gonna, you know, refuse to do it or something like that. So I I I can't think of any, you know, it, there's not gonna be a lot of instances where people are probably gonna refuse to put something on the agenda unless it's, unless it's problematic. Um, and and in that case, I think we should probably respect that if somebody's identifying it as problematic, we should wait for the whole group to be there to uh to kind of weigh in on it, not have it decided and then and then enter into some sort of a contract possibly that that we can't get out of. Thank you.
Okay. Not sure if we've reached a consensus on how we wanna deal with this agenda or this item in our um procedural bylaw. Is council comfortable with the a simple majority, or do you, do you want something in the procedural bylaw that specifies that in a situation like five at council on a, on a specific night, three people couldn't add something to the agenda? Do you feel that protection is is necessary?
Even just saying that you need four people or, you know, four members have to vote to add something to. Because, you know, we have, for instance, you know, we have it that if you wanna remove something from the agenda, you need all of council to approve that, you know. And it's like, why would we say you need all of a hundred percent of council to remove an item, but you need, you know, three people to add something? It's um, you know, like, that's where I think, uh, you know, so I I think.
And yeah, but then you've got Denise's problem where uh in an emergency, then you've actually handcuffed your council. Like, then they can't make decisions in an emergency situation. So I I can't decide. I mean, the thing is, is no rules will ever work if people are held bent on doing the wrong thing. Because then there's ways around it. So you just have to assume that uh your council is going to, you can't assume. But I, but I think it, you can't hamstring your future council either and say that in an emergency situation, if you have quorum, you can't add agenda items, because then that that could, that could be a major problem.
No, you can, you can still add agenda items, though. Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, you can still add agenda items. It would just, I'm saying that there has to be some sort of a, you know, otherwise, why not just have it so that you don't need to have vote to add agenda? I just wanted to just have it so that any, you know, one person can just add an agenda item. Why even get council to approve adding agenda items?
But the other side of that too, following councillor Wiley's comments, is that um, you, this would, this would in ensure that you had to have four out of five to put something on the agenda. But later on, there could be a far more serious item in the agenda where three out of five are making that decision, you know, like, maybe you're spending a hundred thousand dollars on a grader or or some major repair is being decided upon. And three out of five can make that decision, but three out of five can't add an item to a council agenda. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's a tough situation. It's a tough, tough one to to decide upon.
Perhaps, perhaps the answer.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, perhaps, uh, just maybe a a quick add to this. Perhaps maybe the answer isn't um limiting or or adding rules around how something is added to the agenda, and this is just a suggestion. But but rather strengthening the backend on how, on the procedures on which on how council can reconsider a decision that was made. So that if if that situation does occur, we have a strong process where We have a strong process where, whereby the majority of the council, of council can return. And, and have a robust process on how we can re- uh, uh, add an item for reconsideration. At the next meeting to, say, reverse the decision that was made that, that obviously would be against the will of the majority of council. Uh, like Deputy Mayor Mon- uh, Montgomery, uh, outlined, just an idea.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, and so that is actually something that I did contemplate, and, and that's why I keep using the term like, you know, um. Uh, I, I don't want the municipality to be, you know, basically, uh, you know, bound by any contracts or, or, you know. Cause like, um, um, you can technically have three counselors say, yeah, you know, let's sign a contract for tomorrow with this group. And then there's nothing, there's, you know, like, at that point, there's, you know, without kind of maybe getting into penalties and whatnot or, or being sued. So that the problem is that you could have a minority bind the municipality before, and, and the damage is already done, that's where I kind of. That's why I, I had that, you know, idea that, uh. It's, it's, it could be too late if you were to have some sort of a mechanism to kind of reconsider.
You can see that, is, is there a situation where count? Uh, and, and pardon my inexperience on this question, is there a situation where. Council would be the one to enter a contract, would we, or would we not just be the ones to say, yes, uh, you know, administration, please. Continue with the, uh, you know. Pardon me, let me, let me think about my words some more before I go, because I've lost. Lost to too long. Please continue.
Here, okay, any other comments on this, uh, Council Peterson?
I'm in favor of, of simple majority, your worship, I think that it aligns with the MGA. It aligns with all the legislations that Jonathan has put before us, I understand Council Montgomery's concerns. Uh, if it became an issue, uh, there is. Uh, potential within the existing legislation to, to revisit, um, motions of council. And, and I, I'm just in favor of moving forward with a simple majority.
Any other comments from counselors, I guess we need to give Jonathan and Tara some direction. Um, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, um, I, I, sorry, I was just under the impression that like when we discussed this with Mr. Mina, that he, he was in favor of having a threshold of four. Like, he thought that two thirds of like, uh, of, because our current one says two thirds of the maj- of all of council, so five. And he was saying, you know, that's prohibitive, but you know, say, he, he, I believe he was in favor of having the threshold of four. Um, because that was a majority of, of council, um, so it's a simple majority of. And we, I guess we could, you know, we could go to that, you know, the terminology of, you know, it's, it's, um. The majority of the, you know, elected members, you know, so if there's six people on, you know, then I guess that would still be four, but. Um, so I think four is, is probably a safe number, and, and I. I make, we'd be hard pressed to find instances, I think, where, um, you know, you would have three people in favor of adding something, you know, that's like serious, that's gonna, you know, like. Um, you know, that's emergent, COVID nineteen or something like that, and the one person is refusing. Uh, I, you know, and, and I'd be interested actually to hear our CIO's, uh, perspective on this as well, um, if you wouldn't mind.
Um, Kevin?
Uh, well, I guess perhaps what I'm, I'm not sure of here is if your quorum is four. And there's four members of council present. It's, I guess what I'm perhaps struggling with, it seems to work against, then, then you really can't have that meaning of council and make any decisions. I guess that, that's my concern, or maybe I'm missing something here?
Oh, because you wouldn't, four votes?
Right, well, I'm saying if your quorum is four, then your, your majority is, is three, if there's four members present and you have quorum, but. You know, if it has to be four members, then all four members have to vote that way, like, I guess, I guess what I'm saying, you could almost. And maybe ledge can help me a little bit more, it seems to me you're almost cross, crossing the line that you got quorum for a meeting. But you can't make any decisions at that meeting. Is, am I, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Well, th- this is just specifically to do with adding agenda items, uh, after the agenda has come out, so, you know, we have the agenda and then we show up to the meeting. And let, let's say there's four people at the meeting, I'm saying that three people shouldn't be able to add a new item at the meeting. Unless you have all four on side essentially, um, just to prevent the three from adding something and then passing it. When maybe the rest of council isn't actually for that.
Yeah, no, I, I can see, I can see your point, it just, uh, unfortunately, I think it's still conflicts with the whole quorum of having. You know, like really, I'm not sure how I'm expressing this, I, I get what you're saying, and it likes, you, you're suggesting that somebody could. Load the agenda, so to speak, with a, an item that may otherwise not go through. Um, if it's added to the agenda, is that, so I think I'm understanding that, but I think the conflicting point you have then is. You're kind of defeating the purpose of the quorum of the meeting, like, you know, like, it's almost like the meeting shouldn't progress then. Um, you know, like you're, the, the quorum that has showed up is not being entrusted to conduct the business of council.
Well, like, so what I'm thinking is that, like, so the, a meeting is called, there's already agenda, so, you know, they're going there for the purpose of that. Okay, so that can progress because that's what they're there for, but I, I just think that it would create problems to. Allow three people to add something to the agenda. I mean, because it's almost like, imagine if you had all seven members there, and then you're, we're basically saying three people could add something against the will of. You know, so it's like, almost like, if we're gonna have three people with that ability, then we should say, no matter how many members of council are there, you should still be able to add. Something if you have three votes, I think, so it has to be one or the other, I think.
Yeah, you know, at, at the end of the day, I think it's.
Sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, um, I think it's council, you know, if that's, if that's what this council wants to do, I, I don't see any legislative reason why you can't, I guess, again, it just. You know, um, i- if, if, if this council feels that that's a real concern, then, then you could probably do that. Uh, specific to adding items to the agenda, I just, I worry it really, uh, impacts the, the overall decorum of the, of the. Of the council meeting in general, or, or council as a whole going forward, and that, you know, um, that. I guess showing trust in your fellow council members to make decisions they feel are in the best interest of the community when all members of council can't be present, but you have quorum.
And, and, and it does, it kind of has the supposition or the idea that those three members are, are going to do something bad, what if they're. Trying to do something really good, you know, and it's something that's really essential, so they're trying to add this agenda item. Because it's the way it should be, you know, there's that side of it too, Counselor Wiley, you had a comment, I think.
Yeah, so I think I agree with Counselor Peterson and Mayor Fuel, I think a simple majority works, and, and here's my reason. Imagine Martians attack Strathmore, Debbie, Richard, Pat and I are the only ones that make it to the meeting. Uh, and we gotta put in agenda items about what we're going to do to combat the Martians. And suddenly subsection twenty-six dash four of some bylaw says that, you know, we don't actually can't add agenda. Yeah, I just don't wanna hamstring future council in case of a Martian attack.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Um, so currently, like, currently, we have the rule of two thirds, which actually is defined in our, our current procedure bylaws, five. Um, and, you know, I, I can't really think of, you know, any instances where. Sorry, hold on a second, um, where that's created problems. Um, and to your point about like, like, so the mayor has the ability to, and, you know, we even did it like a few weeks ago where we. We called a special meeting with no notice whatsoever, you know, so there's absolutely nothing stopping the mayor, for instance, from calling a special meeting and saying. This is what's on the agenda, you know, and at least all of council, like, we, I, I'm just saying, we don't want a situation where. The rest of council is not at least getting notified, whereas like, if, if the mayor has to call a, a special meeting, you know, we all get notified. We all get notified of what's on the, the agenda, and then at that point, you know, it's, it's more legitimate. Um, like I said, I'm just trying to protect the process of, of, you know, where people show up to a meeting for a specific purpose. And then it turns out that that purpose just gets like totally, um, totally kind of waylaid, um, that's, that's kind of my concern. Um, and so that's why I said, I think we have the ability now to protect, to like, to cover, if, to cover emergent items essentially, we have that ability. Uh, with the mayor calling special meetings.
Uh, Counselor Midster.
If we get into a situation, do we not have the option to postpone it to the next meeting? Because we're not prepared to make a decision at that meeting? Out of respect for fellow counselors?
Well, and that would require, I believe, a majority vote to postpone it.
Uh, you would have a motion to defer it to a, another meeting? That would be a simple majority, yeah.
Jonathan, please, help.
Yeah, through the chair, um, yeah, I mean, at, at any point, council can postpone an item or defer an item, uh, it just needs to be a simple majority vote to do so. Um, so that's, that kind of goes back to, I think Counsel Peterson brought that up too, if, if there's an item on the agenda, you know that you're not in the attendance for. We can ask the other counselors to postpone that item for you to, to me that you might be in attendance for. Uh, I think the other thing too is, um, I think Counsel Langmaid was going to ask about, usually when you approve a contract or an agreement. You need to have that contract agreement before council and the agenda package, just because council needs to review that document before they can approve it, right? And it's the same thing with bylaws, uh, according to the MGA, council has to see the last version of the bylaw before they can give it third reading. So, I mean, that might answer some of the concerns I think Counsel Montgomery is raising about, uh, you know. Last, last minute adding things to the agenda with, you know, four counselors being in approval of doing so, so.
Okay, and, and if, if council feels comfortable, like, I, I'm just, like I said, I care about, you know, like protecting the process and, you know, I've kind of worked from what I've seen in the past and. Um, what I know can happen, um, but if, if council's comfortable, then I'd be like, you know, like, I'm, I'm fine with going along. Again, you know, I'm fine with going along with whatever the majority, uh, wants to do, so, that's, that's, that's what I care about.
Okay, thanks, uh, Counselor Langmaid and then Counsel Peterson.
Thank you, I, I'll just pop in with, uh, one more thought on this, and that is. I, I think I, I personally am leaning towards, uh, more of a simple majority or, or two, or a two thirds for adding things to the agenda. And, and I think my reason is this, and it's that, as, as much as, uh. I understand, uh, Deputy Mayor Montgomery's comments around, you know, three people could hijack an agenda. If we make it, uh, you know, in the situation we're talking about where there's only, you know, four counselors present and, and we need to vote on an agenda item. Making it need to be unanimous throughout those four, or four members also gives the power to one person to hijack the agenda. So, for example, if, uh, an emergent item was coming regarding COVID and. And I'm certainly not saying that any member of this council would say it, I, I'm just giving an example. And, and someone on council did not want to talk about COVID, they don't believe in COVID and COVID's not real. Now, I'm certainly not saying that that's any member of this council, um, but that person could, in theory, hijack the agenda and, and. Remove an item from the agenda, you know, prevent an, uh, an important item from being added to the agenda, and that, and that gives, you know, the power to the one. Um, in either situation, you know, there is the opportunity for, um. For a kind of strategic, uh, planning around the numbers in, in a meeting and things like that, and. And, and I'm not sure that any solution is going to address it fully, I, I think it is important that we, that we. Lean on our roles and responsibilities as elected representatives and as counselors and, and, and that, um. We adhere, you know, kind of harkening back to that code of conduct by law, you know, if, if that was, uh, an activity that occurred where. You know, three people tried to hijack a meeting and sure that it, it was, it was in compliance with the procedure by law, but if it, if it was done out of. Uh, an intent to act without councils, you know, without the full, um. You, you know, in, in a way that, uh, would not reflect the full opinion of council. That to, that to me would be a code of conduct issue, that we could follow up on that as well, uh, you know, from that direction, um. But yeah, I, uh, all, all that to say in, in the end is that I, I, I think I'm leaning, you know, I'm leaning towards, um. Either, either a simple majority or, or a two thirds majority for this item, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Peterson.
Thank you, your worship, I, I have, I have nothing more on this point, if, if other people had, uh, had more on it, I, I just, I had just two questions if you're heading in that direction.
Uh, yeah, I'll just ask Jonathan then, Jonathan, if you have a consensus as, as far as this item. But then if, if a counselor feels very strongly against this item, what will happen when this comes back to us as a package? Where we're looking at the entire bylaw to approve or not?
Uh, through your worship, so right now I, I'm hearing that consensus is that we leave it as a simple majority vote. What could happen is if we bring this back, say, February sixteenth or March second, whenever we do bring it back. That counselor could make a motion to amend the bylaw at second reading to, to change a section.
Okay, that's good, I just wanted to allow that, uh, opportunity for that instrument to be, to be brought forward. And then, uh, if, if that person felt strongly enough about it, they could try to have that thing, that item changed, okay, thank you. That's good for all of us to know then, uh, Counsel Peterson, I think you have questions on some of the others.
Just ve- very brief, and, and, uh, the, the first one is, and, and they're very general, the first one is regarding. The issues of public hearing, and, and I have no concerns with anything that's, uh, that's in this procedural bylaw. But one of the things that I've noted in, in our time on council is that so, so many people do not understand. That when we speak, or, or when a public hearing comes forward, that it's not just members within the boundaries of our community. That can bring issues forward on one side or the other. And I don't know how that can be communicated in this, or if it should be, or if there is potential to ha- have it. Um, you know, just in the, in the forward of our public hearings always. But I do know that that's something that our public just doesn't understand, and that really came to mind, especially during the conversion band therapy. Uh, of, uh, or the ban on con- conversion therapy. When that bylaw came forward, that, that provided an enormous amount of education for the community. Into, when they saw people from across the country bringing issues forward to our council, that it was a huge revelation. That people could bring, um, issues to a public hearing from beyond the boundaries of our community. And so I just think if there's an awareness that could be built into the process somewhere, I don't know whether it's here or whether it's in the forward of a public hearing. But I think somehow making certain that this public understands that would be useful. The, the other thing, um, that, that in a very general sense, um, with regards to this procedural bylaw. That really came to mind was the whole use of social media and how it impacts on, on procedural bylaw and the. The course that I took two years ago, I think, on, on, um, on social media, one of the things that really stood out for me. Was, was the, um, presenters in that, in that three day seminar said that. Use of social media engages every part of a procedural conduct by, or procedural bylaw and a code of conduct bylaw. And, and this, uh, if I were Jonathan, that would make me gray, but what it did, what it did for me was it ensured that I stayed away from social media. Uh, in that understanding that the mayor is a single spokesperson, but what I think. I, I don't think it has a place in the procedural bylaw per se, but understanding the huge impact that social media has. If there is a time in the near future that this council could engage in some social media training, I would, I would be really grateful for that. And that's all I have, your worship, and, and I really appreciate the work that's come forward from our administration, uh, around this, thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Well, thank you, your worship, I, I just want to kind of reiterate that we do have some social media training. Currently being developed by our communications team that will be provided, uh, to council along with media training more generally.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
Um, thanks, I have a few more things to raise, and so I just, so I was gonna say, if anybody else wants to go first, uh, I can, uh, I can defer to them.
Well, let me just ask Jonathan, was there anything else that you wanted to put on screen as far as your original presentation? Or are we, we've been kind of, uh, dealing with things that we've noticed?
Uh, through your worship, yeah, actually, a lot of the questions and discussion topics that I, I wanted to raise as council, you guys have. Already discussed, so it's been a very fruitful conversation thus far, um, yeah.
So we can carry on with just general freewheeling questions, okay, Deputy Mayor Montgomery?
Thank you. Um, so my next one just has to do with, uh, the mechanism to go past ten o'clock for meetings. Um. So, and so you're saying that the mechanism could just be, uh, suspending the this bylaw. Um, so I guess like so in in a meeting, you know, like I would just make a motion, I would say like I'd move to suspend the procedure by law.
Uh, through the chair, it'd be a motion to suspend that's that's specific section. So we would say, uh, I can't remember off the top of my head what section it was, but. Um, section. And whatever.
Nineteen point one.
Nineteen point one.
Thank you, yes.
Deputy Mayor, are you missing that motion to extend that you traditionally did whenever we had to go?
Yeah, yeah, I've been I've been kind of missing that and, uh, yeah. So that's why, but that's why I'm really focused on this. Yeah, I'm really focused on that. Yeah. Um, okay, well, yeah, so long as so long as there's some, as as long as there's some way for me to keep everyone here past ten o'clock, I'm fine. Um. Okay, uh, so my next one is, um. Twenty point one C, um, just just talking about ensuring that all members who wish to speak will have spoken. Um, and, um. So I guess like just for. For clarification, um, you know, like, is this gonna be like, you know, s- s- everyone has the opportunities. So I I think I think our current one says people can speak, you know, up to twice on a motion. Um, and I know other places like don't even actually have like a limit, like you can speak however many times you want. Um, so I'm just wondering if if this is intended to allow for just basically everyone to speak as much as they need to.
Through the chair, yeah, I, um, my my advice would be not to have a limit of two, just because what if that third thing you wanted to say was really, really good and would have helped important discussion? Um, so I know it's not even, it's not really a rule in every procedure bylaw. This would be something up to council how they wanna see, how they would wanna move forward. Um. I, my advice would be to not restrict, um, counselors to just two items per item or two two topics per item.
Yeah, and like I I keep thinking about what Mr. Mina said and just about protecting the process and fairness and and, you know, slowing things down, you know, we don't have to rush. It's better to kind of slow things down and get all the information and not rush into decisions and, um, okay. And and I apologize to council and members of the public for, uh, all the questions I have and all the. I'm I'm always kind of, well, my next one, you know, it's about, uh. Oh, actually, so this one, actually, the the mayor will like, um, this has to do with challenging the ruling of the mayor. So our current bylaw has a mechanism to challenge the ruling of the mayor, like if there's a point of order. But this one, I don't see anything about challenging the ruling of the mayor. Um, and and, you know. Not that this would probably happen much, but I believe that there should be something in there for somebody to just say, hey, I believe you might have made a mistake. Um, you know, and and maybe have council be able to weigh in and say like, yeah, you know, maybe. Um, you know, maybe that that wasn't, um. You know, that was maybe an error or something like that. I'm sorry, I think it's probably good to have that check or balance in there.
Jonathan, can you elaborate on that and maybe bring in, is the MGA involved in any of that?
Uh, through the chair, um, so this is definitely not something that's typical in a lot of bylaws that we reviewed when we were developing this one. Um, it is something that we have in our current bylaw. It would be, um, so what happens is if if there's something, an item that's not covered within this bylaw, we would then defer to Robert's Rules of Order. If council would like to see, uh, that section added to this bylaw, I mean, I have no issue adding that section. It wasn't a large section, so it would be a whole lot of work for me. Um, it'd be really up to council at this point.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm like, unless, sorry, go ahead, uh, if you wanted to say something.
Oh, I was just gonna say it's it's, um. It's always struck me as being a little bit contradictory, like I've read through the Roberts Rules of Order and and, uh. It talks about the, uh, you know, the mayor has the right to rule. And then as soon as the mayor rules, the challenge can happen. So it's it it I find it a little funny, like, what's the point of me making a ruling if it's gonna be automatically challenged? And then you I I you count on the vote, I guess, as far as whether your ruling is gonna be upheld or not, which I'm okay with. But it just seems the one is contradictory of the mayor's position, power to make the ruling, and then it can be challenged automatically. Uh, Jonathan.
I, through the chair, I I think that's a, that's a very good point. I think that's why a lot of procedure bylaws don't have that section because it does in some ways undermine the, uh, the chair's authority to preside over the meeting. But as I said, that this is, uh. And to respect the role of the chair for sure, but this is council's procedure bylaw, so, uh. You guys can definitely, if you wanna make that add that section, that's that's totally, it's an easy change and I just want to give them all a council to make sure that that's something that you wanna see included.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We'll go back to you.
Thank you. Like, wha- what I'm thinking is that, like, you know, just because we're we're all human and we all we all make mistakes from time to time and, you know, like, oh. So like last term, for instance, you know, nobody got point of order more than I did, of course, and, um, and and there was. You know, there was that one instance where, um, you know, uh. Where a a motion that I made was ruled out of order by yourself and and council ended up upholding that. Uh, you know, that was the only, out of all the point of orders, you know, I'd ever had, that was the one I challenged. And, you know, and I, and so council ended up upholding that. But in hindsight, I believe that 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 wasn't an actual out of order motion. And so it's possible that, you know, you know, if if the chair is, you know, accidentally, you know, makes the wrong call. You know, maybe it's it's, you know, okay to have that second line to say, you know. Uh, you know, yeah, that that's actually, you know, maybe that that motion isn't out of order, for instance, you know. Um, I think just because it puts a lot of. Yeah, I think, like, and again, it has to do with kind of protecting the process, you know, like imagine. You know, if if we didn't have, you know, kind of the mayor we do, you know, where like. You know, it's possible for that to kind of, uh. Go awry, let's say, without with, you know, without that. It's almost like, you know, it's almost like if you gave. You know. The the government or or police or courts, the ability to just kind of do everything they want without the ability to actually check, you know, and 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 have somebody look at that, you know? So I think it's important that we actually have a mechanism to at least appeal, appeal a decision, you know, that's almost what it is. It's like an appeal of a decision. The decision can be upheld or or, you know, or it can be kind of rejected. Um, and it's almost like, yeah, it's almost like an appeal court, you know, like, uh, you're. Um, it's just, I think it's healthy. I think there's a reason why, you know, in, you know, kind of democratic states, there's kind of multiple levels of courts. You know, that can examine the the ruling of a judge and and then say, you know, yeah, that's that's, you know, okay or not. Uh, it's just, it's just an extra way to kind of, uh, protect, uh, processes and ensure that there's um, uh, fairness and whatnot is is my perspective.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I'll go to Jonathan and then Counsel Wiley.
Sorry, your worship, I wrecked a little of my hand.
Okay, that counts the one.
Yeah, I agree with Jason. It would be good to have some kind of appeal. But I don't know where would you appeal to, because then you're just appealing to the majority of council and then.
Well, you'd appeal to the mayor.
Yeah, or actually, that's was gonna be my second thing is, could you just have an opportunity to bring the appeal back to the mayor and just say? With all due respect, you know, here's the reason I think that 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 was right, but I don't know the answer. I don't know who you'd appeal to, because then if you're an unpopular counselor and you're just getting shut down by the mayor, then you could also just be shut down by fellow councils.
Yeah, you you can see that if if the the mayor, if there is no opportunity to challenge a ruling, you could see that certain types of people in the mayor chair could be in a situation where they abuse that power. You know, not saying that that would always happen, but there is that potential. You know, where seven people and emotions can get involved in certain things and you sure wouldn't wanna see someone uh, who who feels he or she has a, you know, blank card to just do whatever he or she wants to do. Rule the way he or she wants to. Yeah, I I can understand that. Uh, I'll go to Counselor Peterson and Counselor Langmaid.
So, so your worship, I I think that that I I'm I'm okay on either point. I've I've worked in organizations where both things, um, uh, were were present. But I agree with your, with your observation that 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 it isn't a anomaly when when you, when you you know, are supposed to rule and then you're overrule and to speak to Counselor Montgomery's point or Deputy Mayor Montgomery's point, when he, when he spoke about about, um. The point of order that you ruled on, one of the things that that I was, that I held in esteem in terms of your actions with regards to that was that you asked the CIO to weigh in on the conditions of the process. So I I know that there is a certain inherent danger in making administration the target. But they also carry a level of expertise that our counselor doesn't have. We are really fortunate at this point. We had Jennifer Swatsky before, who was very well versed. And now we have both Jonathan and Kara who have this extensive understanding and knowledge. And so partly to do with that, in in terms of this council, I am very, very comfortable with how you handle um, those kinds of situations on on point of order where where you are ruling. I have never seen you rule without asking for specifics and guidance. And I I don't know how administration feels about that, but I think calling on them for their expertise. Uh, not in terms of emotion or siding on one side or the other of the debate, but simply speaking to the process is really useful. And that's what you did, and that's what they did, and I think it it contributed. And so I I am in favor of, uh, of the way it reads here.
I I appreciate that. I I guess I'm just thinking in terms of, um, you know. Next term. Whoever is in charge or whoever is chair of meetings. I I do understand the need to have checks and balances in in, uh, in in place in case someone is going to abuse uh, the right to rule on points of order. Uh, I could see how that you would want those checks and balances. I just, I just find it, I just found it a little humorous that you can make a ruling and basically every time you make a ruling, it can be just challenged.
But your worship, your worship in saying that.
The majority, right? It goes to the simple majority on the votes, so.
Yeah, and but it is. And and you're right, but in saying that, regardless of whether we have the the simple majority or whether you are ruling in laterally, you still have in both cases the option to seek that professional advice.
That's true.
Regardless of what we do, I I really am okay with either one. Um, but, uh, I think that that to be really mindful of utilizing that expertise that we now have and we're fortunate to have it.
Thank you. Um, just before I go to Counselor Langmaid, uh, have we ever? And I hope I don't have his name wrong, have we ever asked Mina? Who did his his section on rules of order, uh, or the the procedures of meetings? Uh, how he would view the 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 approach of a a mayor making a ruling and and what follows after that? Would he have some guidance for us before this, uh, package of, uh? Or before this bylaw comes back to us? Kara or Jonathan? Would it be worth it to ask him what he thought about this, uh, idea? I have a feeling I know what he'd say, but.
Uh, through your worship, um. I I do know that there has been some discussions with Ellie about, um. Challenging a ruling of the chair. I will say also too that uh, like the order of precedence that we discussed it with our bylaw at the beginning. Uh, once, you know, MGA proceeds the bylaw, bylaw precedes Robert's Rules. When something's not in our bylaw, we look to Robert's Rules, and Robert's Rules does have a section on appeal of the chair. And and it is pretty much that it would go to majority vote at that point. So whether it's in the bylaw or not, that would be the process that we would call.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I mean, that that pretty much helps us quite a bit. Counselor Langmaid?
Thank you, your worship. Um. I think my only comment, I I would be in support of of seeing it, uh, added added back to our procedure bylaw. Uh, mainly for the reason that I recognize that people are human and that while uh, your worship, you are a wonderful chair and and I I absolutely, I absolutely tr- trust your decision making, um. It might not always be you in that chair. Uh, there might be a situation where someone else might need to take your place, uh, and I'll use myself as an example where I'm not as practiced as you are. And there is the chance that I will make an error. Even, uh, uh, you know, we are human, we are we are counselors, but we are also human. And it's possible that we can make an error in a ruling, and I I think that having that, uh, spelled out in front of us on how we can address it because that is information that we would need to know fairly quickly, because we don't want the meeting to keep going and then have to, uh, challenge the chair ten minutes from then. I think having it, uh, ready and available in the procedure bylaw, so we know exactly how to address those situations when they come up rather than someone having to run out for a Robert's Rules book, uh, ha- has a benefit. And and like I said, it's I'm supporting this not because I believe that anyone would would, uh, uh, would, uh, be abused the role of chair. Uh, I think it's more that we are, we are human and we are not parliamentary experts, and there is always the option that or the or the opportunity for us uh, to to make an error and and I think it's worth having uh, a procedure written out on how we can address that. Thank you.
Well, it it seems like there's consensus that we would like to have something in where the mayors, where the chairs, uh, ruling can be challenged. Um, and I think Jonathan and Kara, I think you can bring that to us as part of the bylaw. Uh, Deputy Mayor, did you have a further comment on that?
Um, ju- just that, like, you know, like, the the that these these, you know, as we're all getting along, we're not even gonna really need the rules. Uh, it's for when there's times of, you know, kind of controversy or conflict, that's when the rules are kind of important to step in and say, okay, here's the lines that we can't cross. You know, here's the rules that we all play by, they're all equal for everybody. Um, and so that's, you know, a lot of these things we're probably never gonna come across. Um, and I'm only bringing them up just, you know, in the off chance that there's, you know, that this comes up at some point, so. Uh, it's it's not to say anything about anybody that's, you know, on this council doing anything wrong.
Thank you for that. So Jonathan, Kara, you, uh, I think you understand what we're doing. Any other, um. Any other questions or comments on things that have come up in in Jonathan's presentation or the bylaw package that's being presented to us? Counselor Wiley and then Deputy Mayor Montgomery.
So I have four more questions, so I could do three of them and then leave one, but, um. If we could go to. Pardon me?
I think we can live with four.
Okay, if we could go to twenty three point six. Uh, counselors shall not speak for longer than five consecutive minutes. Um, I I don't understand the point of that one. So you look at us today. It's it's five minutes. If we were to set timers before each one of us started talking, it just it it's not doable. And then I think Jason mentioned this in an email. Would that include then I ask a question and then there's an answer and like five minutes that I I think. I don't think that seems reasonable.
Yeah, I think I think one of the things is you you wanna try to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard and to speak. So there's always that concern that someone who's a gifted orator can, uh, can basically take over the meeting by talking for a long time. Uh, I you know, I don't I don't see questions that are asked of the person speaking as part of that. But I I think we do need to ensure also that our, um. That our meetings are efficient and that everyone gets a chance to to have equal chances to be heard. That that would be my take on that so far.
Uh, Jonathan? Maybe it could say something like after five consecutive minutes, the mayor, the mayor may have, the chair might, uh.
I make a ruling and then. No, I understand what you're saying, yeah. Uh, Jonathan, do you have some gems of wisdom?
Uh, through the chair, not not gems of wisdom by any means, but, uh, this is something that was in our previous bylaw, it was five minutes and I think I I I definitely take your point, Counsel Wiley, um. I've never seen, uh. Any council have a stopwatch and then just time how long someone's speaking for it's. But it's more just as a rule that, you know, if you do notice that someone is going on for a long time, asking a lot of questions and then not letting other others at the table speak and ask their questions. It's just that then at that point, uh, a mechanism that you can use, you can leverage to kind of allow someone else the opportunity to speak and, uh. Like I I I've never seen it where a counselor went on for six minutes and someone made a point of order and he was, they, at that point, that counselor had to stall. Um, so we can clarify that a little bit, like you said, to say that after five minutes, maybe we open it up to the floor and to see if we, a- anyone else wants to speak at that point, or we allow that counselor to continue with if that means.
Yeah, so after five consecutive minutes, the chair may open the floor. For other points of view.
I think that makes sense, and we can do that for sure.
Okay. Um, twenty eight point seven. The individual who moved the motion may withdraw the motion. I I I just didn't understand this from the procedures that I thought we had started to adopt. So the idea that you put forward a motion. So the idea that you put forward a motion and then the council would own the motion. I felt like this contradicted that, so I just wanted some explanation.
Um, through the chair, I think the important part of that section is the uh prior to the beginning of debates. So you can withdraw your motion prior to uh starting at, once debate starts.
So, so yeah, I couldn't visualize that, so from your, everyone else's understanding, then that doesn't uh contradict that.
So you're saying, once we start discussing, if Counselor Wiley puts forward a motion and we start to debate. And discuss, it's no longer. He can withdraw it before the debate starts.
That's correct, your worship. So, yeah, once, once debate starts, it becomes property of all council. All council have to be okay with withdrawing that motion. Um, if if uh, if prior to debate starting, Counselor Wiley would have the opportunity to withdraw the motion if he sees.
Debbie, you're unmuted.
Sorry, I'm having charging issues. I'm on four percent.
Okay. Um, and then I just outright didn't understand twenty-eight point eleven. I didn't know what it meant.
Um, through the chair, so. Some councils will uh, whenever an item comes forward, they have to make a motion uh, and sometimes it's just as simple as making a motion to accept. That presentation as information. Going forward, we want to move away from that unless, you know, a bylaw or an act forces us to do so.
All right, my last one is uh, section thirty-four point two. B. Was kind of a dramatic ending to the uh bylaw. In it, it describes a counselor that the other rest of counselor. Rest of council has a problem with being dragged out in handcuffs by the police. I'm wondering if this is a real necessary ending to this. Um, it seems rather extreme, given. You know how everything else is laid forward quite nicely, everything's very clear. I mean, remember counselors are being judged by the public. They're being held accountable, we're on Zoom meetings, so if we're being obstinate and and repugnant, then, I mean, it's. Public record, and then we've got this uh. I find this vague, like the rest of council can just decide this one counselor is. Is uh a nuisance and they can get rid of him or her, get rid of him or her. I I just found this an unnecessary end. I pictured like a coup.
Through the chair, that section would be um, just in the highly unlikely event that we, that there was a counselor who was very disruptive to the meeting. That was preventing the meeting from proceeding and going forward, you would have uh instruments to. To deal with that scenario, and like I said, highly unlikely event, so, but.
Do uh?
Is this what other, yeah.
Yeah, uh, uh, through the chair, I I've seen this in a lot of procedure bylaws. Um. You know, I think this almost exact wording came from a another mid side or a smaller city. So uh, it has been defended by legal counsel as well. So it really is up to counsel, if you, if you wanna see this in the bylaw or not, we can definitely take it out if if that's counsel's wishes, but. At the end of the day, this is your bylaw and. You can make that call.
I found it completely unnecessary, but at bet, at at it's, at least it's vague. Like, it seems to me then that the majority of council could just decide. Uh, in our interpretation, this counselor is violating the rules. And now here she must publicly apologize. I found it, I didn't like this.
The, the only thing I can offer, Counselor Wiley, from my, from my experience is we had a budget meeting once many, many years back. And one counselor swore at another during the budget meeting. And uh, it was pretty blatant and it was pretty loud and it was in front of staff. And uh, yeah, uh, it was shocking and we really kind of glossed over it at the time. It was my first term and uh. I was kind of shocked because obviously staff has heard it and that's uh. And then you wanna have a safe and respectful workplace too. So you could have a counselor who is um, pretty cantankerous, but um. Maybe it's the wording, we could wordsmith it a bit better. Is that where you might be okay?
Yeah, if we're talking about removing a counselor, I, from the ability to vote. Like a democratically elected counselor from the ability to vote, I think it needs to be extremely specific. As to what criteria we're talking about. Um, what you're talking about, Mayor Fuel, is like a very blatant infraction of the code of conduct. But it doesn't say anything about that in in here. It just says. Upon the interpretation of the rules of the councils. In other words, the council could just vote. And decide that in their interpretation, this counselor has violated the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it left up to abuse.
Would it help then if we directed Jonathan and Kara to come back with wording that would talk about violation of? The council's adopted code of conduct?
Personally, I would get rid of it. Um, the idea of a counselor being removed from the ability to vote. I mean, unless they're breaking the law, I I can't see, I can't see that being okay. But um, that's my opinion.
So this is something that happens at at higher levels of government than us as well. For example, the, you know, MLAs being ejected from, from the legislature for the day over, you know, accusing another member of. Uh, e- e- even, even suggesting that another member has lied is enough. Uh, to have an MLA ejected from the legislature for for the day, uh, unless they apologize. Um, so I mean, uh. It, it, depending on how the chair rules it, uh, you know, a- at higher levels of government is, you know, as the speaker, but, you know. Depending on how our chair rules it, I mean, it could, it it could be quite minor. Um, but this is uh, a- as far as I'm, a- as as far as I'm aware, you know. This is a practice that happens, uh, you know, it it's something that has, has occurred uh. At other, at other levels of government, and I'm sure at our level of government as well. Um, and I, I think it is in. I think it is important that there is a mechanism. In place to remove someone who, who is, who is not acting at their best. Um, you know, there, there's the protection of the integrity of our office as well, and if someone is, is, you know, really. Really taking advantage of that or or is being, uh, you know, harassing or or abusing another m- member of council. Or or, you know, making claims that are untrue. I I think there does need to be a process where that person is. Um, you know, i- if they, if they aren't willing to. Admit to their missteps and apologize that, that they've now become an, uh, you know. A a distraction in the meeting and and are preventing council from, from really doing the work that we've been elected to do. Um, I I, I'm in favor of leaving it in. Uh, I think that that process does need to be there. Uh, you know, to hearken back to something that De- Deputy Mayor Montgomery said. Uh, this is not something I ever want to see used, um, but, but I think it's important that we, we have it in place so that. So that we can stick to the procedure when, you know, if, if something goes wrong. Um, that's what the procedure is. Therefore, it's for if something goes wrong, and I think it's, I I think it's worthy of leaving in. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Montgomery?
Um, I just wanted to say quickly, I, from my understanding, this is somewhat standard, like, you know, there's kind of the sergeant-at-arms position, you know. And and basically, it's their job to kind of maintain, well, to, yeah, when, when the chair. And so I've seen it like in other organizations and other boards, they have similar language as far as just, you know, that if you're kind of being disruptive to the meeting, then. The chair can ask you to leave, and if you won't leave, then, you know, then they call, you know, the sergeant-at-arms or something like that, so. Um, I, yeah, so, so far, you know, in all the. So far, I haven't seen anybody dragged out of a meeting yet, so, and I've been at some pretty good meetings, so. Um, I don't, I don't see this one being used very much.
Jonathan, is there a concern? Uh, Counselor Wiley had a good comment. Is there a concern that we're removing that counselor from the ability to vote on something then?
But through the chair, I mean, that is a concern, right? You don't want to be um. Preventing a counselor fulfilling, fulfilling their duty without cause. So what if we cleaned up the the wording a little bit, just to kind of lay out some of the types of violations that may warrant being removed, like, like harassing or. I know it's been an issue in other jurisdictions where um. Elected officials have put hands on another elected official, so in in those circumstances, maybe we, that's when we, I'd cause to be maybe a little bit more.
And I think two other, two other words I've heard people use is disrupting. So the, it's so impeding the meeting from moving forward, so some kind of impediment. Creating an disruption or impediment from the meeting carrying on its normal function. And then absolutely, yeah, harassment. Um, yeah, code of conduct violations. Yeah, that sounds good.
If you challenge my ruling, you can be removed. Kidding, I'm just kidding. Counselor Peterson, I like.
Uh, Jonathan, there's, there's also language in the, in the MGA. That lends itself to this, a section in the MGA, in fact, that lends itself to that, that you could also reference.
It's a good point. Just to clarify, sorry, your, your worship, um, clarifies that we can prevent a counselor from fulfilling their duties? Or the harassment part?
No, I, I mean, you know, uh, under, under, the conditions under which a counselor might be removed. Yeah. That it, it's referenced in the MGA, as is the other point you made.
Counselor Wiley, did you have another? No, you're good. Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Montgomery?
Um, thank you. I was just even gonna say that you're, like, the mayor and I both know it's possible for, for, you know, that to be abused, actually, when you're trying to, you know. Do certain things at meetings. Um. Not, not that the mayor did that, that, just to be clear. Um.
Thank you. Did you repeat that?
Yeah, the mayor's never tried to have me hauled out of a meeting yet, so.
I tried to help you once.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Yeah, you definitely did, so I appreciate that. Um. Let's see, uh, so just number uh thirty point one, um, just to do with the um. The deadline for a notice of motion. I was just thinking that the deadline for a notice of motion submission should be the same as like the submitting of a jet item. So the Thursday before the meeting. Um, simply because a notice of motion is obviously just a notice, like a heads up that a motion is coming, so it's not even like. The motion's coming at the next meeting necessarily, it's coming down the road, but just being able to. Uh, uh, cuz what I've seen in the past is like, you know, you have a notice of motion and you're like, oh crap, it's too late to submit if the next meeting. And then you have to wait, you know, like two weeks basically to get that uh. You know, that notice of motion basically even in there, and then the motion comes after that, so. Just to kind of prevent that, you know, basically getting kicked down the road too much. If we just allow people to submit a notice of motion the week before, um, up to the deadline, then that, you know, hopefully you should kind of keep things efficient.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jonathan, you're, you got that?
Um, through the chair, yeah, we can definitely look at that section, I guess, um. Like a lot of these things, my one piece of advice here is just always try and contact the office of the CIO, do you right, just to get some advice on, on writing the motions, you know. Maybe um, the notice of motion doesn't need to be a notice of motion, it could just get added to the agenda, those types of things, so just make sure that those. Lines of communication are really open between our council and the office of the CIO. And then, yeah, we can definitely look into um, changing the uh, the deadline to be the Wednesday or the Thursday before the council meeting. It really depends too on how much support you may need in writing that notice of motion, right? So if you do need some administrative support, we may need a couple of days extra just to make sure that we can, you know, adjust our schedules accordingly.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, if I already have, like, let's say it's ready to go, you know, okay, thank you very much. Um. Uh, the next one I have is thirty point two, which um. Waive the requirement for a notice under by a majority vote. Um. So I was gonna suggest that that be like, you know, that be for people, but I'll, again, so this is kind of similar to that other, you know, adding to an agenda. So I'll just defer to council and uh, and uh. Whatever, so let's say whatever is decided for the adding to an agenda, uh, we can just kind of probably go with that for uh. Waving notice. Um, next one is number thirty-one. Uh, this just has to do with uh council correspondence. So I just wanted to find out, uh, like or clarify. So if somebody sends uh council, like, cuz we, we get letters from time to time, um, and so this is saying that. Uh, on behalf of council, blah, blah, blah. Um. Oh, so, so it says all correspondence uh shall be included in the council agenda. Um, so like, you know, we get tou- stuff kind of quite frequently that, you know, probably shouldn't go into an agenda. It's just kind of like, you know, somebody thanking us or something like that, so I just wanna clarify that we're not kind of like, you know, talking about including that when we say. All correspondence. Um, and then the other thing is just, uh, I wanted to clarify, are we blocking out, you know, personal information? You know, if if somebody includes their, their address or something like that, we're not putting that in the agenda as well.
Yeah, through the chair, uh, yeah, I, that's a very good point. We will clarify that, just to say that we would reject all personal information. Um, one thing that, the reason why we have it in there is just for transparency too, right? So when, when a member of the public does submit a letter to council, we can point it and say, yeah, yeah, we could council publish it on the agenda. And if it was an item that maybe was actionable, council then, because it's on the agenda, have an opportunity to make a motion regarding that correspondence as well. So that's part of the reason why we wanna start adding them to our agenda packets.
Okay.
And then also too, if we did get a letter from the province, we can add that on to our agenda, just so the public then would have that opportunity to view it as well.
Okay, yeah, like la- last term, actually, like, I think it was a gentleman who sent us like a, a story they had written, actually, and uh. You know, so it was kind of this big booklet, basically, and, you know, technically it was correspondence, but uh. Um, okay, thank you very much for that. Um, and, oh, and then just on number thirty-two. Um, so it says, uh, no regular scheduled counselor committee, the whole meetings will be held between nomination day. And so nomination day, that's when nominations close, or that's when nominations open?
Um, through the chair, that's uh, when nominations close, so this past year, it was in September twentieth.
Okay, okay, as long, yeah, as long as everybody understands that, I guess, that's fine. And, oh, one thing I was gonna ask you about is, um. Nineteen point three, it says that there is no requirement, I believe, for. A motion to adjourn a meeting. Um, there is no requirement for a motion to call the question or adjourn a council meeting. So is that saying we don't need to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Um, through the chair, that's correct. Um, it's actually becoming a pretty standard practice that the uh, at the end of the meeting. The uh, chair could just adjourn the meeting without a motion to council. That's not to say that council can't make a motion to adjourn the meeting earlier in the meeting or during that time, it just would have been a new requirement.
Okay.
The, the idea, Jonathan, is the idea that once the business is done, the meeting's over. That's kind of the deal?
Exactly, yeah, and I um, I know Ms. Rusk actually got an opinion from Ellie on this too, um, that. It's, it's very similar to when we called the meeting to order. We don't need a motion to call the meeting to order. We would need a motion to adjourn the meeting as well.
Interesting.
But I love that motion.
Um, the, the only final thing I have is just with regards to the, this document itself, um, and a mechanism for enforcement of it. Um, you know, any, any one of us could kind of break any one of these rules, and the question is like, what happens? There's nothing in here that says if you break this rule, then such and such happens. Um, should there be something that says that, you know, if you break one of these rules? Then that, you know, transfers over to the code of conduct somehow where it can be dealt with, or? Um, cuz like, the way it's kind of, if I understand it, it's just kind of basically, it's like, okay, yeah, you've broken that rule, you know.
The mayor's gonna make a ruling that you can't argue.
I think that might be where thirty, thirty-four point two B comes in, though. You know, if, if someone is not following this procedure by law and not following, say, for example, the order of speakers that, that the chair has. Identified, that the mayor has identified, and they're interrupting and speaking over someone or speaking out of turn. I, I think that's where thirty-four point two B comes from. The chair can go, hey. You are not following our procedure by law. You can either apologize for not following it and follow, and, and continue to follow it for the rest of the meeting. Or we're gonna ask you to leave, cuz you're not following our bylaw. You know, I, I, I think that's where that thirty-four point two B comes in. That is the mechanism for enforcing it. If you're not following, you can leave.
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering if like, okay, like, and if council is fine with it as is, I'm just kind of thinking that, you know, there might be instances where it's not. Either egregious enough to deal with it on the spot, you know, and kick somebody out of a meeting. Um, but you still might want to deal with it. Um, or or if you notice something, maybe after the fact or something like that, you know, it's like, you might want to deal with it, but then, you know, you can't. Um, but so it's just something, I guess, to think about. Um, that I'm not saying we should necessarily do anything with it. Thank you. And that and then you, uh, thank you, everyone, for for all your time. I appreciate uh, I appreciate the discussion and everyone's made a lot of great points and I appreciate your time. So thank you.
Jonathan?
Uh, through the chair, I think I think uh Counsel Deputy Mayor Montgomery made a pretty good point there. Um, but I guess my one uh response would be that I think for the most part, any any mistakes related to the procedures are probably just that mistakes. And there needs to be a lot of grace and and opportunities to make those mistakes and to make those errors. We can always have, you know, an opportunity after the meeting to, you know, maybe do some more education on on the procedure bylaw and and some corrective actions that way. But for the most part, I don't think anybody's will be uh breaking this bylaw maliciously, right? And if if they are, well, then that's probably where trigger the code of conduct bylaw as well as. So um, for the most part, you know, there's no such thing as a perfect meeting, as uh Ellie Nina said during our orientation. And I think that's just, that has to be part of the perspective too, when we go into our meetings, that sometimes we're going to make mistakes and for the most part, they're going to be honest mistakes and we just have to kind of move forward with that.
Thanks, Jonathan. I have a quick question for the group um as far as procedural bylaw. Are we comfortable with just keeping it informal that when a person has questions, they limit themselves to three questions at that time and then it goes on to the next person and then it'll come back again? Are we comfortable with that just being informally or do we want it embedded into the into the bylaw that at each at each turn to speak, a counselor will be given three questions and then it'll go to the next counselor? Uh, Deputy Mayor Montgomery. And I'm not trying to limit discussion. I just I just want to try to be efficient and give everyone a chance to be heard is basically what I'm trying to do. Deputy Mayor.
Um, thank you. And and sorry to keep jumping in all the time. Um, so what I've found in like meetings, um, other meetings and even just kind of our meetings is it's good to have it kind of informal. And and I think that a lot of how the meeting runs relies on the chair and how the chair kind of manages things and 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 so I believe it should be up to the chair basically to kind of say like, you know, okay, hey, yeah, you know, you've had your chance to, you know, like you've you've talked a bit, you know, let's let's get to somebody. It's almost like, you know, you're, because like it's it's like your job or the other chair's job, you know, to like just kind of keep the meeting running smoothly and efficiently. And and, you know, sometimes topics will veer off under, you know, some sort of a tangent and, you know, you got to bring people back to focus and stuff like that. So that, to me, that's kind of part of the the overarching job of the chair is to just kind of keep the meeting running. And so um, I I don't personally have a problem with with you or with with, you know, other chairs uh with other, you know, groups that I'm with. Um, you know, ta- having that ability to just kind of, you know, make sure everyone's staying on topic, you know, for the most part and and, you know, and and making things run smoothly and um and and, you know, if if somebody asks a a quick two questions, you know, maybe they should get a third question or or, you know, if they ask one question and it takes ten minutes, you know, maybe, yeah, then it's like, let's go to somebody else. So um, I I personally would rather leave it informal and up to the chair. Um, I think it'll just run a bit better. Thank you.
Counselor Wiley?
Would also like to leave it informal. And so a perfect example would be how I just said to you, I've actually got four questions left and you're like, yeah, at this point in the meeting, that makes sense. So leave it up to the chair.
Thank you. As long as everyone, you you know, I I struggle with it sometimes because I never want to insult anybody. I never want to limit their chance to to ask a question or to speak, so I don't want to appear heavy handed or anything. It's not like I've had enough and I want to stop you. Uh, Jonathan.
S- sorry, your your worship, I left my hand up.
You left your hand up? Okay. So uh, is that everything in the bylaw, the procedural bylaw discussion that we've all wanted to uh get across?
Except that we're not supposed to call you your worship anymore.
Yeah, I saw that. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, so I no longer can address you and my bishop the same way.
No, that must make you very, very happy then. Uh, Counselor Langmead.
I just have one final question and it it is likely going to be a very quick one. It is at the very end, it's actually in the schedule A. Uh, and I know it ties back to something in the uh in the in the direct bylaw as well, but it's it's calling the question. Uh, it is the role of the mayor to call the question. Um, I think I've probably, I I think I I broke that in one of our first meetings. I I attempted to call the question, so I apologize for that. Uh, but my only question is, should that be mayor or should it be chair? Uh, just in case the mayor is not the one in the chair.
So just a matter of wordsmithing?
Just, yeah, just wordsmithing, like, is it, would it be, you know, it it's up here in adjourned too. It is the role of the mayor to adjourn the meeting. Uh, should it, it should it be mayor or should it be chair? I guess it's just my question for Jonathan.
Well, through the chair, uh, I think that's a very uh good point. I will make sure I I correct those in the bylaw. Uh, just because during our committee meetings, we do call the presiding officer, the chair, as opposed to the mayor. So it's a good point.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Langmead. So that wraps up our discussion of the procedural bylaw that is going to be coming to us in uh February sometime. Well, that was a really good, well-rounded discussion. We all got a chance to get our points across, which is really good. I really appreciate the clarification from CIO Scoville, Karen, Jonathan. Your advice and your input is uh much appreciated tonight. And thank you to all the counselors who are involved. Um, so that moves us to item nine, no origin business tonight. Uh, item ten, no administrative inquiries and eleven, we are looking for a motion to go in camera, I believe. Counselor Peterson.
So I think I'm interrupting someone, your worship.
Oh.
Did somebody, anyway, I will believe that we go in camera.
And can you state this?
Thirty eight, under section twenty one, uh subsection one A of the Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act at nine thirty eight.
Thank you very much. You've all heard the motion, counsel. I'll call the question. All in favor?